Did anyone hear from Ryan? Okay, slide six thirty, we'll go ahead and start. I'd like to call a meeting to order, and then everyone can use Ryan's flag. My presentation is to declare for human United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one herod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first up, we have York County Economic Alliance, where the trail friendly business.
Thank you, members of council. And also for the public, I do have copies of the presentation for today as well up here. I can certainly pass them out if anybody would like one. Don't want to take up too much time. Thank you for that time. So thank you, everybody, for the time today. My name is David Gonzalez with the York County Economic Alliance. Wanted to chat a little bit about some updates for the Trail Towns program, more specifically, the trail friendly business program, a micro grant called the Yoko Bloom Trail Towns Edition, and then also some general YCA updates. So really quick, apologies from my back to anybody. For the Trail Towns Friendly Business Program, I'm on page three. Want to give a quick update about what the Trail Towns Friendly Business Program really is, and then additionally, a crash course in the Trail Towns Program. The Trail Towns Program is a collaborative effort to leverage communities' access to the rail trail. It's a platform to drive economic development. We developed the Trail Towns Program in late 2019 for a local concept of it, where we came together before this body and the four other communities along the Heritage Rail Trail as inaugural communities to bring to life the network that leveraged the Heritage Rail Trail as a Trail Towns network. So this was all in an effort to ensure users knew about the great businesses, services, and amenities all throughout the Heritage Rail Trail communities. As the data in slide three kind of indicates, it's that there's a lot of economic opportunity when it comes to our trails. It hasn't been fully leveraged to date, and we want to build off a trend that where the outdoor economy, think hiking, think camping, biking, things of that nature, are bringing people outdoors, but there's a lot of dollars left on the table when it comes to fully promoting ourselves. And as the data says on the profile side, forty-three percent of users are bikers, twenty-eight percent, and also twenty-eight percent are walkers, hikers. There are eleven percent who actually run the trail. This is based off the 2017 data, but as we saw last year, use of our parks and our trail systems spiked by two-hundred percent. Due to the pandemic, but it's shown unprecedented use and unprecedented want and demand to engage in the outdoors. So we're excited about that, and there were 263,000 annual visits in 2017, but we've ventured to see that that number's only going to increase as we go on. Given the proximity of the Heritage Rail Trail to a large community, about four million people live within fifty miles of a rail trail, and they average $4.5 million in spending annually. Another stat there is fourteen per person spend on food or drink, and that's pretty daily for any time a trail user comes and uses the trail. They're spending about $14 a day. So we wanted to make sure that those money doesn't come unused, and then when someone does visit our communities, they know what services are available, what amenities are there, and again, that they are spending their dollars here. Moving on to slide four, the trail friendly business program. We wanted to enter here into this opportunity. After we launched the Trail Towns Program last year, it launched in May of 2021 this year for the Trail Towns, for the trail friendly business program itself. We have our first business, and we're proud to say that it is a New Freedom Business, Gilice. We have nine applications to date that our team is sorting through in the coming days to shape our first cohort of trail friendly businesses. Along with that, we host workshops. Five cover, that are recorded on our website as of right now. Five are focused on trail towns and the economy around them. And then additionally, there's two others that share details on about how to be a trail friendly business. And as a kind of note on the slides here, the initiative is really to encourage and leverage the trail traffic within our communities. Again, YCA isn't just leaving businesses high and dry. We're providing some guidelines, best practices for businesses to market and attract their trail users to come into their business, and then also, we're providing applicable technical assistance, and as I mentioned earlier, workshops. Onto the fifth slide. And this gives a brief synopsis of what a trail friendly business, what it means and what the benefits are as we see it, as of right now. And again, we definitely see an opportunity to develop this program further in the years to come. But this is just a quick benefit of it. While it's not a requirement, and it's not something we're pushing, we want to make sure that businesses feel the benefit of what it means to be a York County Economic Alliance membership. So we are offering one-year membership to the YCEA as well. And that comes along with the benefits of the York County Economic Alliance. For a quick reference, for the York County Economic Alliance, it's the county's Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Corporation. Pretty much, we're just in it to grow business here in York County and help our long-term development. Enough of that, moving towards the other tangible benefits of what it means to be a business program, be a part of the business program, is we're offering window claims, advertisements. Also, we're posting any business that's certified through this program to be based on our website, so indicating that along the trail, we'll eventually have this network that trail user can get an idea of what's located in New Freedom, what businesses are located in Glen Rock. They can access that all through a link to our website. So say it's like a QR code or anything else of that nature, or if they visit the website, they can get an idea of what the businesses are that are located in this community. If they're looking for a bite to eat, if they're looking for a gym, if they're looking for a coffee shop, an ice cream shop, anything like that. The opportunities are right there. In addition, we'll do periodic promotions of our trail towns and our businesses and our communication platforms, think social media mostly. We're hoping to do periodic advertisements of those businesses, too. We're looking to develop networking opportunities. This will be in partnership with our action teams that are installed in each of the Heritage Rail Trail communities. And then additionally, additional promotional material that businesses can leverage, we'll hand them their logos, they can use it on their website, they can use it on their social media, they can use it in any kind of brochures they hand out. There'll be opportunities for that, too. We will, we have a development, I didn't bring that today, but I have a whole host of other material as well. We have trail towns brochures that pretty much indicate what it is doing to each of the trail towns and the advertisement there, too. We anticipate bringing those to each of the municipal buildings, the businesses that are certified nonprofits in the area, and a lot of our travel and local amenities partners as well, so that anybody who's stopping by a specific amenity or a specific business can get an idea about what's here located, just in a handy brochure. I already mentioned the trainings and workshops that we intend to do. The technical assistance, I want to dive into a little bit of that a little bit more. We would offer assistance to trail friendly business program participants for marketing, promotion, event coordination, and local government relationships as well as needed. Pretty much, if there's a business that's having a struggle with specifics that I just listed, we're there to provide some counsel as well. Especially in the first year when they are a member of the YCEA, a current seat member of the YCEA, we would definitely leverage our resources to support them, too. And then financing and grant assistance. We're often the county's agent to help out with financing and grant opportunities, so we can help businesses walk through and sort through those. We can also, in short, help flag some opportunities, too, that come about. Heading to the next slide, slide six. This gives a good idea of eligibility for the trail friendly business program. I don't think I mentioned it at the top of the program, but it's a free program, and how we're able to offer it free at this point is that we secured grant dollars to make this possible. So that's the idea, we secure grants through the state, through the efforts of our local senator, Senator Phillips Hill, to really pull this off and make this possible. So we're glad to offer that in support to help grow our businesses here locally. But eligibility, the two main bullet points here is that a business would be public and open during hours that are convenient to trail users. When we're thinking of trail users' times, and they're going to frequent a business, think of nine-to-five in a good cohort, but also, it may expand based off of the seasons as well. So we may have some times that we really grow that effort, too. And there's no restriction of what kind of businesses makes sense for it. I have a list there, I'm not going to go through it, but that's a list of what we're looking at for potential businesses as well. That list is not exhaustive, that list can certainly grow as we go through the program and as different businesses demonstrate interest. Moving to the next slide, slide seven. There are criteria that we're looking to install as a part of the Trail Towns Friendly Business Program. When we're looking at, they need to provide a trail friendly atmosphere, essentially making sure that the infrastructure's there for a trail user to come out, hang out. Say if they had a vestibule area or an area that a trail user can hang out to get out of the sun, to get a bite to eat, or anything of that nature, or even access Wi-Fi. That's kind of what we're talking about with the atmosphere. Again, for user amenities, that kind of ties right into my last point there, too. They can access drinks, they can access to-go foods, things of that nature. Really comes to fruition, too. If there's an area that they can park their bike, depending on the type of bicyclist, depending on how frequent they are and how serious they are, those bikes can range in cost, and they want to make sure that those bikes are secure in specific areas and well-lit areas, well-secured, well-patrolled areas, too. So that's something of interest, too. And then agree to complete a trail town annual survey. The only way we grow this program and develop this program further is through an annual survey. We're hoping to get the data that shares that how many trail users make up a business's business, essentially. You know, what is it, where are they coming from? And to give a better idea, so we can get a better economic picture of how to promote better. And then additionally, how can we help set up this program, too, in the years to come? So that's kind of the concept there. Additional criteria, a business would have to meet three of those seven. They would have to commit to training frontline staff. Not necessarily too much detail there, but it's also, it comes to the idea that when you're looking at a business, they're often the ambassadors of that community in more regards. When you go visit somewhere, your first taste of a community is when you engage with the business, you get a bite to eat somewhere, you get a drink somewhere. And if you had a bad experience, you remember that bad experience, and you tell all your friends about that bad experience. What we're trying to do is try to help businesses kind of engage in that opportunity and tell them, here's some things you want to do. So when a trail user comes to town, they know the frontline staff at X-Y business is going to know what events are going on locally, potentially. And then also, what are the different amenities close by as well? Is there lodging nearby? Are there events going on that weekend, things of that nature? That a business owner, that a business staff member can really kind of relay to anybody who visits another one. And then overall, support the trail community, too. The idea there is that you support the trail community that's along the network. Not necessarily that you know that, you know, what's going on in New Freedom, but it's also helpful to know what's up the stream as well, what's going on in Railroad, what's going on in Glen Rock, Seven Valleys, the City of York, anything like that. Membership in YCA, we do have members all throughout the county. They would automatically be one of the three, one of the seven criterias there, so that would be fine. Again, it's not, it's not the critical criteria, but it helps with this program, too. Trail equipment storage, as you can imagine, somewhere to store their bikes, things of that nature. Providing trail gear tools, think of maybe biker pairs stations. There's a lot of those all throughout the trail as it is right now. We'd like to grow those opportunities, too, so maybe there's an opportunity for that. Trail promotions, that kind of ties into the trail community at large, but additionally, it's making sure that you're kind of promoting the trail in different ways, whether it's a trail cleanup day, whether it's you're engaging in the trail, you're doing a 5K, things of that nature, that's an opportunity, too. And then trail event support, any events that are already going on, your business plays a role in it in some way. You know, there's runners' clubs, you know, bars and restaurants could leverage that and try to play a host to those kind of events, or maybe it is a fundraiser that's for the trail itself, and it's helping to plant some trees or clean up the trail in some way. There's, you know, there's loads of ideas, and we have it all listed on our website as well for the business that participates. The last slide on the trail friendly business program, slide eight, is our best practices. I'm not going to exhaust it too much, but as you can imagine, these are the kind of things we're helping assisting businesses out through the trail friendly business program. Think of their operations, I mentioned the frontline staff training, but also just try to have a better idea about what the different needs are with different trail users, cyclists, hikers, bikers, walkers, runners, even thinking people who have children as well. There's different needs among all those groups, so it's trying to help businesses, help business owners really understand that. Additionally, operations and have them consider what their hours of operations are, different amenities, they provide different support infrastructure. Product emergency, people like to buy things that indicate the place that they were at, so think t-shirts, think different koshki items like that. Maybe we make recommendations on that. So that's kind of where all these best practices come into play, making those recommendations that really can make a business stand out for trail users. Are there any questions with the trail friendly business, or would you prefer me to continue with the presentation? Okay, I'll just continue, I'll just continue on. Quick slides are these general updates, but I wanted to make sure that this council knew. The Yoko Bloom Grant, Trail Towns Edition, this was a... We run a micro grant program. It's administered by the YCA to provide local businesses funding to expand and improve their services and grow, or please forgive me, bloom, to the next level. So that's the idea there. It's a micro grant that literally, it goes from about $250 to $5,000 of what we've done in previous years. We ran the first inauguration of that this year, and we intend for future years to run it again. But we were successful in a way that we helped fundraise for the grant program itself. We partnered with the York County Community Foundation to bring in $25,000. We awarded twelve businesses on May 11th their grant award. The average grant size was just over $2,000, 2083. But we just had an application pool of about nineteen businesses that represented all of the five trail towns here in New Freedom. We awarded three different businesses, Seven Grove Camp, Gilice Italian Ice and Handmade Ice Cream, and the New Freedom Roasting Company in Delhi. So again, we're ecstatic about this effort because it brings pretty much those needed dollars to help a business get onto the other side of some idea they had sitting there for a while. It's a free program that anybody can apply for. We do host the Yoko Bloom Grant Program throughout the year. There are specific cohorts and additions, as I mentioned here, of the Trail Towns one. There has been some for downtown York, the City of York, and all throughout the county as well. So we're looking to do that more and more each year and grow those programs. Slide 10, really quick, is a YCEA general update. YCA hosts a lot of different events, and that engages a lot of different issues. One in particular that's close to our hearts are workforce development. There's definitely a hiring need all throughout the country, Commonwealth, altogether in the county. So we're hosting a hiring fair on Thursday, June 17th. This is free and open to the public. We have over sixty employers, runs from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Peoples Bank Park. We also have some job prep, too. Most more specifically, on June 16th, the day before, there's a resume writing class. There's an applicant who needs some help with their resume. They can call into this number that's listed here, and they can get the assistance there to assist them writing their resume. But additionally, job candidates also with criminal records will also be considered for many of the employers listed. Real quick, let's see, on the Economic Action Plan, YCA does this with the county of York every ten years. It's a benefit to the ten-year comprehensive plan of the county, and we provide key focuses on economic growth and development throughout the county. All of this is listed on the website, yorkcountyeap.org. Some of the sample key objectives include increased business birth rates and retention, close the income disparity gap, remove barriers to employment, increase broadband access. Some clear barriers to employment that we've identified is transportation, childcare, a lack thereof access. So those are things we hope to work on these next ten years. And the last point here that ties into my last point is the countywide broadband expansion survey. This is a survey that's going on right now throughout the county. We need as many citizens to take the survey as possible. It's an opportunity to fill holes where FCC data kind of lacks and provides an indication of what internet access looks like in York County. Ideally, we're gathering this information on what access currently looks like with a lack thereof, speeds, costs. And ultimately, to help advance this initiative, once we get this data, it's going to help us in the county of York, secure grants, ultimately bring a better internet coverage throughout the county of York. To participate in the survey, it's www.yokofiber.com. The last slide kind of gives a better picture of what it looks like in internet access. On the left, you'll see what it appears to be, what internet access looks like in York County. What that show, that map shows is our megabytes upload speeds, and it's kind of daunting a little bit. More specifically, in York County, we do have 46.5 megabits for download and then 5.8 for millabytes upload. That's pretty good for the most part, considering that most individuals would be able to remote work at those speeds. But when we get down to the actual municipalities and actual neighborhoods, that speed kind of weighs off a little bit. And then what additionally we've gotten the past year is that we have plenty of anecdotes. We have plenty of families who reach out and share that they don't have internet access at home, or the affordability of it is too much. So we have an access and affordability issue. So that's the idea of our survey. Our survey is trying to get the real data from households to share what the concepts are and what we actually need to do, so that way we can turn and go to our legislators. We can also turn and go to providers and say that this is where internet access holes currently exist and where we would like to fill them. The county of York established a task force, broadband task force last year in an effort to broaden broadband access. And one of the projects that came through that was also a sixteen-mile expansion project. This is a backbone network. What that really means is that it's a backbone fiber optic network that runs down the Heritage Rail Trail at this point. It leveraged existing conduit that was underneath the rail trail. And today, actually, you can go on the rail trail, you can access internet primarily closer to Seven Valleys and the Glen Rocks area for free. It's county access right at this point, open to the public to utilize along the rail trail. But our vision is that we would grow access throughout the county, create these networks that expand access and ultimately make it easier for providers to eventually come in and do so. But through right now, it'll be a county-owned utility, and eventually, that providers could lease access, too. So that's the short version of all of that. I'm happy to answer any questions that may have come up through this presentation, but ultimately, I thank this council for the time.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions?
As you said, when you guys were around, I guess the last month or something like that, talking about things that we can get, like the stations and things, so you're coming back in the near future?
Yes, yes, for the action team. Yeah, we'll come back. I asked Andrew, didn't realize he was actually on vacation, so that's good. But I was going to get back with him to schedule something in July for this action team.
Can I ask a question? You know, the, I was just wondering about, you know, they have the signage and like a kiosk or that where you would have layout of the towns, is that still in the plans or?
Are you saying that the trailheads themselves, the large signs, the trails?
Yeah, the ones like if someone comes up to your town that it gives like a layout so they know where a couple of places are?
Yep. So that's actually a part of the action team's goals for each community, is that we would like to update that, those boards, to give a better indicator of what's in the next community. So when you're in, say, when you're in Seven Valleys, you have a better idea of what's down the trail in, say, New Freedom or Glen Rock. So that'd be the idea that we'd update those. And then additionally, just because we wouldn't necessarily list all the businesses along the trail on there, we would indicate more like, this is where, like food and drink access, or some things of that nature. But we would have links or QR codes on those boards that will link to the website that we can easily update and then can share a better listing, an accurate listing of what's in these communities.
All right, thank you. Is there any plan for any additional grants in the future?
So pending success, and then pending also, how many people will sign up for the Trail Towns Friendly Business Program, we can get a better idea of economic data. So then we would like to apply for additional grants, either through the Department of Community Economic Development through the state, and maybe some other endeavors through maybe the federal government as well.
Nothing right now that you know?
Nothing as of right now, but it doesn't mean that we won't have interest in applying for at later years.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Brian? I don't think I did. Thank you. I forgot. I forgot, it's on my first page here. The meeting is being recorded, so staying here implies that you are consenting to being recorded.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I wasn't really, I was just talking, I'm sorry. I was kind of talking to everybody. The meeting's being recorded, so staying in the meeting implies that you're consenting to being recorded?
Okay. Um, do I need to use this, or can you hear me?
I can hear you, I have a very nice voice.
Okay. I'm here tonight because I own a property at 10 Second Street. I have two commercial properties in it that I've been trying to rent. The one is brand new and been redone. They have a fire in it, the tattoo parlor there, I don't know if you guys know where that was, but it had a fire in there. I went through all the engineering and everything to have the space redone up to code with everything today asked me to do. Put a handicap bathroom, handicapped stuff in the back. When I, every time I have somebody come in to look at it, they come to, I send it to the borough to find out if it's okay for what they want to do. I have a zoning that I can look at and see if it's going to do what I think it works at, because that doesn't mean much. I send them to you guys, and they're told right away that they need to go to an architect and have an architect draw a plan for them and submit that to the borough. And when they look into that, you're talking two, $5,000 to have a plan like that drawn up just to find out if they can put a business in that space, that they want to put in that space? I, as you can imagine, it scares almost everybody away. I had a person that I was working with that wanted to do an art studio, and I got the plans from the original engineering thing from 2019. I gave them a copy of that. The engineer told them that they could give them a discount, which would be like $500 to do the drawing on this thing for theirs, and still it could cost them $500. I agreed to pay for that, which, because I'm trying to get somebody in there. Even that ended up not working out. So I don't know which way to turn, how to be able to get people in there. I'm trying to do good for the borough and get businesses back in. I live here, I've lived here for seventeen years. I'd like to have stores I could go to, you know, a little shop or something, you know? But I don't know how to help people to do that, and I don't know what to tell people when they come in. I can't, you know, I can't spend $2,000 for each person that comes into my business to see if they can come into the building, that'd be crazy.
First of all, let me say, I think that stinks, I really do. But it's a state law, right? I mean, I'm not sure that the borough can weigh the state.
From what I understand, though, the barber was just trying to come in. He was already at open, he had submitted a lot of his paperwork and everything, but it ran into some personal issues, and that's why he couldn't come in. But he has a shop in Mechanicsburg, and he has a shop in York. And in both of those shops, he wasn't required to do that. Only in New Freedom was he required to get the architect, engineer, drawing.
And I guess, and those two, it's unfortunate under the code when you're talking about a change of occupancy of a commercial building, and the two that you referenced, it may not have been a change of occupancy, and therefore, he may not have been required to follow that step. But I guess in this case, that's what the issue is.
He said it wasn't the same shop, it wasn't something different when he came in.
Yeah, what's the legal definition of a change in occupancy?
I have also, I was issued, when I redid the building, a using occupancy permit. I thought that I could rent it out to somebody. I'm thinking, okay, I can't get somebody to rent it on a monthly basis. Maybe my mother-in-law's an artist and one of her friends does art thing where you get together, do paintings, stuff like that. Big open space, nothing in there at all, all wide open. Could I rent it out for, you know, put tables in, let them do a little art class or whatever in there? Because it's got, I gotta, you know, for the building.
Well, I'm correct. All right, it's been a while since I rented out commercial space, and this is new. But it seems to me that, and the way I always did it, people coming in... But it seems to me that, and the way I always did it, people coming in, unless they were making a change, like adding sinks or changing it from a storefront to a beauty shop, you didn't really have to do anything unless you were changing electrical or plumbing. Now, is that not the same as it is today?
This is the first time I'm aware of this. So I don't want to talk all the time. I think Wade, you've been closer to this than probably anyone at this point in time. And as the building code official, you'd be the one actually interpreting an issue in the opinion.
It is a change of use. Right now, the occupancy he has is for a shell building, same as you would grant for someone this building.
General retail is what it's worth.
Now, what goes in that wall, you still have to issue an occupancy certificate for that specific use. It could be the same use, but it could be a different layout. It could be, you could go from something that's a non-hazardous type of use, or a retail to someone that's selling fireworks. Now, you have a hazardous use, but it's still the same use.
I would understand.
Well, why would he have to have an architect do a drawing if they're not changing anything in the building?
Change of occupancy of a commercial.
He has a certificate. He has a certificate. Wouldn't it be very similar, like if you have a liquor license and you're moving it?
Well, I, again, I would think if you're moving, if you're moving tables in, you know, or even just shelving, as long as you're not changing an architect.
I'm not changing things, they're not asking to change anything like that. I can understand if they wanted to move something like a sink or change a light or anything, of course you gotta go get the proper permits to do that. But just a different person into the building in something that's already approved for general retail.
I somewhat appreciate our building code officials, when it's a shell of the building, you have to go through the proper permitting to ensure the improvements that are being made to accommodate that use is being done correctly as well as then the use itself.
But if you're not making a change to the use, it's a shell of the building. You know, in this case, I believe I saw drawings where all they were doing was putting tables in. I mean, it wasn't like they were changing anything architecturally to the building. I mean, I could see where, I mean, you're basically, if you enforce it to that letter where anytime somebody comes in, I'm not disagreeing with you, but if you enforce it to that extent where anytime somebody comes in, you have to go out and get stamped architectural plans, you're basically telling me I can't use my building.
But what he's asking me is, this person moves in, I have to issue this person an occupancy certificate? I'd issue an occupancy certificate based on the two thousand fifteen code, the drawings he has registered for the, that were submitted by the insurance company when the restoration went into place called Fire was under the two thousand nine code, and it's been well over a year since then.
Okay, so you're saying you're looking at the basic structure, not the actual, whether he's putting tables?
The year of the code, I can't issue a certificate that says this meets current code based on drawings from two thousand and nine.
Understand, okay.
It's not there.
Right. So let me ask this question then. If he has it approved under the two thousand fifteen code, and assuming five years from now it's still the two thousand and fifteen code, is he gonna have to get stamped architectural plans just because he wants to move tables and shelving?
If it's going from, if you're not changing use, right now you have no use.
Okay, so what he's saying is that when you rebuilt it, it was under the two thousand nine code.
I understand.
So he's just saying that you have to make sure it's under the twenty fifteen code.
What they're telling me, that every person that comes in, I've sent there, has to get this drawing. Not one person that's gone in there has not had to get this drawing.
But I think it's only for the first time. And I think, I think.
Even when I asked if I could use my use of occupancy for the general retail, which is what I thought, being able to let the people, rent it to people to do the art stuff, that's retail, that's a part of retail.
Let me ask one more question.
I'm the owner of that business, so I'm, but I'm renting the space.
Let me just ask one more question. If he gets a twenty fifteen, let's say he just leaves it empty for right now, and he comes to you and says, I want to update my use of occupancy to twenty fifteen, can he do that with what he currently has? Because he already has drawings. And you would redo that and grant the permit or no?
For building, not for use, depending on the use, depends on what he put in there. You're only allowed, it depends on the use, you're only allowed so many people per space. We don't know what's going in there, we don't know the occupancy, we don't know if you have sufficient means, we just don't know if it has the proper fire access. You don't know unless you know what's going in there, that's what the certificate of occupancy is based on, saying this building, this use is, what is that for?
So wait, at least the certificate of occupancy issued there was.
Because we're talking money, we're talking big time, consummated, the price, isn't that right?
Thousands of dollars.
Thousands of dollars.
Hold on, we just, one conversation, please.
It appears to be dated July nineteen, two thousand nineteen, and it's for a use of the whole business.
Use group B, there's different use groups. When he prints in, discerning use is not the same as a building code use, the building code has different use groups.
So it is what he's proposing, kind of a, kind of a difference?
It depends on what it is.
But it was issued for general retail, it was issued for a specific.
For the size of the, for the size of the building, yes, it's probably going to fall under a B depending on what he's putting in there. It's a real good possibility because it's not large enough for.
So what he got back in two thousand nineteen, what did that allow him to do?
Here, pass it around, read it.
What did that allow?
If I can't do this, I would like to be able to make them apartments at least. I could have rented both of them as apartments a hundred times over, I mean, at least twenty times.
Big cost factor.
And if they're one bedroom apartments, but it would be a nice one bedroom apartment. Again, it's more money I have to spend.
I mean, you spend a lot, you put a lot of money into it.
So if he, we really can't, if we all talk, you're not gonna, you're not gonna hear what's coming. If he, for instance, wanted to put a tattoo parlor in there right now, exact same thing, Boomtown comes back and brings their tables, does he have to get a different occupancy since it's already approved for that?
It's been vacant for a year.
Over a year. I can't hear what he's saying.
He said it's been vacant for a year.
It's vacant for a year.
Over a year.
Over a year?
Yes, it has been for over a year.
Because he can't get anybody in, because of the code.
I thought I just said you.
Okay, let's assume, just for the sake of argument, that it wasn't vacant for a year, that Boomtown moved out a month ago and he wants to put another tattoo person in there, can then he use the certificate?
Then we just apply for a change of occupancy, if you want the business one to change.
Okay, and that wouldn't require, that would just require an occupancy permit, if it would require stamped engineering drawings?
They would already be on file.
They would already be on file. Okay. So I think what you need to do, and I, I mean, the way I understand it, what you need to do is find somebody, get somebody in there once, and have continued occupancy, and then you'll be able to renew the occupancy when they leave. And I think as long as you aren't changing the number of people in the building or any electrical or plumbing items, that you should be able to just get an occupancy permit at that point.
When I had that one issued, they issued it as a general retail.
What he's saying is this.
It says business, it says business, not general.
When they talked to the engineer, he informed them that it was issued for a general retail business, because that's what I asked them to do, because the tattoo parlor, and the time that it took, the year it took to get all the stuff done, had gone someplace else. So I called him, changed the thing, had the plans changed legally, all the paperwork done, to change the plan, to remove the cleanup room that was in the back, that he got a washroom that, you know what I mean, that we didn't need anymore. So I took that out and made one big open space, so that I'd be able to use it as a general retail store with whoever wanted to come in to put whatever tables or whatever they wanted to into that space, it would just be an open space with all brand new everything. So that's what I did. So that's why I've been using it as an office, because my first company doesn't want it to be vacant, so I had put a chair and a table in there to use that as my office, as my rental office. So it's really technically never been vacant. It's been my office that I would have, was thinking about when the retail stuff was. I haven't done it because I'm so good to get around. But if I can't get around, I gotta do, I'll try to do something to get some kind of income coming in, if you can.
Is this something that you can look at and get that with Wade and see what we can, what they can do? Because, I mean, I, you're virtually taking his property if you can't, if he can't rent it.
And I guess, the one question that you can't ask your building code official, if there is a provision that's absolutely clear, you just can't ask them to look the other way.
Oh, no, absolutely not, yeah. I mean, he got it out of the box.
I did everything with it. The other one, where the scissors was, I haven't done anything to, because I can't even get permission to rent the one I did everything to. So scissors just went, I mean, that's been Mr. McNew's hair shop for longer than I've been around. It's been a hair shop forever. And then it was Tom's for another twenty years. And now it's vacant, but I'm not sure what I can do with that. I mean, I don't know what I'm gonna run into. One person came down and they told them that I was gonna have to put handicapped accessibility into the building, and they were gonna want me to do a handicap bathroom in there. Well, it's only five hundred square feet. If I do all that, there's nothing left for retail. So, I mean, I can't do that in that, in that much space, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And it's been a business for sixty years, so.
Normally, those items are grandfathered, right? I mean, I.
No, if you change something, accessibility is not grandfathered, that's nothing we can, that requires, you have to, that requires a leave from department, they're very specific.
So if I can't do that with that building, that's why I said, can I turn that one into a one bedroom apartment? It's a eighteen by twelve room in the front, or eighteen by, eighteen by thirteen room in the front, and then an eight or twelve by twenty room in the back that are connected. I could make a bedroom and a nice living room kitchen combination, very big bedroom, and nice apartment, one bedroom apartment out of it. I've had at least twenty to thirty people call, my other friends have had people calling them about, I don't know, if we could rent it, check, flinch it over to an apartment. So if I can't do the commercial, can I please do something so I can?
Yeah, can you, can you give us a week? I mean, I, give us a week, because what I'd like is Steve to review it, and Wade and I'll talk, Steve and I'll talk, and we'll figure out.
I'm sorry to be so emotional.
Oh, no, no, I, you know, I mean, if I were standing in your spot, I would be more emotional than you are. I understand entirely what you're going through.
Put a lot of time and work into it, and you can't do anything with it.
That's just not, you can't.
Wade, Wade, is there any, is there any use that's gonna be, impact parking, for instance? You know, you're talking about inside the building, but if you want something inside, you want to do something inside the building, and it may affect how many parking spaces you need, is that, is that a potential issue? Before you get too far down the road and it comes up, and someone says, well, you didn't tell me that before, so.
That's something that would fall under discerning portion of it.
Right, ours, ours.
And that's another reason why we need to know what the use is.
Well, there are four parking spaces and four garages on the property. So I do have parking spaces, which is more than most of the people in the central business district have. I mean, Shaw has absolutely no parking spaces for his business, so. And the way I read it is there are exemptions for the central business district for parking because of that, of that factor. And that's why, when I talk to Shaw, that's what they explain to me also. So that's where, that's what, where we're working with, with that. There is more space in the yard to add parking if it was required, but.
What, I've seen this when I was working too. You know, somebody wants to change the use, and everything, you know, you start with a different set of rules when you change the use, after like, most of the time, it's a year, year's gone by, year's gone by, nothing's been happened to it, you change the use, there's new parking requirements, et cetera, and, you know, those things are in zoning order, and so the borough can't waive it. And you have to go to zoning hearing board, get either a variance, it's probably not something that's subject to special exception. So, you know, I know it's difficult to understand, but when rules change, the borough, you know, if the property's been empty, it's a different situation with the case of Shaw surveying, how long they've been there, since the bankland? I mean, they've been there a long time. So, you know, they're sort of grandfathered in some respects where you're not, because it's been empty, even though you had a fire, it's been empty and now you wanna start over again. I'm just saying, you need to be aware of some things that, you know, the borough doesn't have.
There are exemptions for this. Right into the rules.
Not in zoning.
There's really, I mean, Wade just showed me a section of the law that says, he, his hands are tied, I mean, he's not allowed to waive it. This might be something that we have to, like, even call the state legislature about to see.
I mean, otherwise, I have a dead property, which I don't know what to do. I mean, Marcelo, go builder, and Diplo, where's the thing, and, you know, something, I mean, is that what we do?
Yeah, give me, give me a week, because I'm gonna.
Parking, you need to put up four townhomes, you know?
We could change the name of the town.
I already talked to them, I mean.
Yeah, it's a shame, because we're trying to bring new businesses into.
Exactly, I'm trying to do the right thing, I really am.
No, I know you are, I know you are. And it's, and give us a week to try to hash it out, see if, what wiggle room there is and what we can, you know, what we can do to meet the letter of the law, but still give you what you need to. Because I don't want, I mean, it's almost, I mean, I would feel like my property was being taken from me if I were standing where you are.
If I can't do commercials, please look into something I can do to put them in the apartment, so that I can at least get started on one of them making it into the apartment. I keep the commercial property that's just been redone for last and see if I can get somebody in there, but at least I can start on scissors and try to get something.
No, you're not gonna be the only one that runs into something like this, obviously. I mean, it's going to impact rural estate all through the town, so we really need to get our hands on it.
I mean, I'd love to see the town get stuff back and come back to life again, I really would.
Wade, wasn't, wasn't a situation similar to with Bunny's TV after you left and somebody else wants to move in, and you got, you have to comply with certain requirements, you could zoning the building code, et cetera? Parking, et cetera, you know? And if the borough decides, well, we're just not gonna look at this, we're gonna look at the other way, and then what's, what do you tell the next person that comes in and says, well, now I am on line, and you're gonna look the other way for something else?
Where's their parking at, so? They don't have any parking.
No, I don't think they do. It's backed a good old bit.
They just opened, so? They actually opened it between the times, so.
All right, well, let us, let us, I'm sorry, let us have a week and.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that brings us to approval of the minutes. There it is, you gotta wrap your round, Jerry. Questions or comments on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as prepared.
A motion to accept the minutes?
Okay.
Accepted by Ryan. Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
How's? I bet it's hard.
I have a discussion. On the bottom here of these minutes, you know, it stated the last time your media manager reported, very closely.
I'm sorry. Turn the mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's hard to hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oops. All right. Council chamber of the audio upgrades is the minutes I'm looking at. You're not looking at the same minutes that I'm looking at?
Audio video upgrades, right?
Tony, you did it for later today.
It's for later, it's just my question, I'll come to it later.
But it's correct, it's written?
Yes. It's correct that. It's correct, but I, well, wait, wait.
Okay. Treasurers' report. I want to point out on the first page of the treasurer's report, we're showing negative cash balance on the general fund and the water fund. That's because the loan that we took out is a drawdown loan, and we haven't had to draw down against it. So this just shows that we have an obligation, we have the money to meet it, it's just not been requested yet, so we haven't drawn down on that loan.
There's a weekly invoice for a Crystal Conrad. What is that? What is she? It shows up every week. Do we hire a cleaning person? I'm on the second, the very first page of accounts pay. Four two nine one six. Check number.
Yeah, I think it's the person that was hired over at the community building.
Yeah, that's always, that's always, she hasn't worked for a long period of time because of COVID. We just brought her back in now to, to start cleaning.
There's a deposit here for carpets by Martin. Is that for the community center for the room that we had the problem with? Was that ever approved by council to do that?
We did the.
Or the center? No, it's carpet in here. He's saying it's carpet in toxic carpet in here. And if that's only the, uh, deposit, how much is the whole amount? And doesn't council need to approve that?
I mean, the carpet, the carpet was worn through to the concrete. It was here.
No, I'm not, he said that's, he said that's for here.
It was for all the rooms, right? It was for the whole thing. I mean, we had holes in the carpet in the offices. I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure that you need a look for replacement of something that's damaged all the way through.
That's it?
Well, A, was it in the budget? Did you have the money and set aside the budget?
For carpet? Yeah.
I don't, well, sometimes you have just a general maintenance.
It's just a general maintenance.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I saw just, so, I mean, that's a good amount for a deposit, and I didn't know what it was for. So we're having all the carpet in the building redone, is what you're saying?
It's already been done in some of the rooms, right? Was it done? I thought Andy's carpet was. Ah, okay, now it makes sense. Well, it made sense to paint for us too, so.
I don't know if we've ever specified an amount under which or over which he has to come to the council. Usually there's a number, a magic number, it's three hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars, or thousands. I, I don't.
I don't.
And I don't know if we had one at the time it was here, and I don't know whether we find that information, but I, I presume you should clarify.
Yeah, we probably should have some number, but, um, I mean, that was a maintenance item, and it, it wasn't, it wasn't like you couldn't do it. I mean, we've got holes here, we've got holes in the bathroom, and so many.
So will somebody look into that and take?
Yeah.
I'd imagine that's what, in a resolution or ordinance?
Typically, it's, it's either in a policy or an ordinance, sometimes, I mean, you surprise me, not ordinance, setting forth the powers of the, in this case, the administration. And it would be in something along those lines. It wouldn't be in the first class cap, it wouldn't be in the borough college.
Right, oh, no, no, no.
What, what would you recommend for something like that, as far as the proceed, if we were to add or change something in, in the rules? As far as an ordinance or?
What do you find in other municipalities?
I see it both ways, so I can't criticize you if you did one way versus the other.
What about a dollar amount? Is there something that, is there a guideline that any other municipality uses?
Uh, yeah, I can't say that. This issue typically almost never comes up, because everyone knows what it is, and so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can get some guidance for that.
I normally, you know, like, water tower, things like that, they come to council.
Oh, yeah. I don't think anyone would know what the copper amount is. For approval, that's right, like Ann said, it should be a dollar amount for approval.
Probably something like ten K or something like that, I guess.
You, you might wanna specify ten K for a project and max of whatever for a year. You don't, you don't wanna impact your budget too much.
Yeah, that's true, good point. Questions?
Out here.
Out here. Go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to request that the minutes and the treasurer's report be included back in the agenda for the citizens. Because when you're going over this stuff, we, like, have no idea of anything out here.
Okay, yeah, we do that.
Can we do that? That'd be helpful, thank you.
When did it, when did it stop? Did it stop when the, 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 consent agenda stopped, stopped?
Yes.
I apologize for that, and I didn't really, I didn't even notice that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would it be acceptable if we do get our new, um, I'm gonna try, webpage up, that we would post it there? Is that acceptable, or, because the consent agenda, I don't know how widely that was distributed, but it seems like you could get to more people if you had it on the web.
Well, I think it'd be good to have online, but I think it would be good to have this attached, because we're busy lives and having to go there and print it out and everything. For the people that do take the time to come here to have it already available to them would be great.
Yeah, we could do that, no problem.
There's a question about concerns, citizen.
I don't know how old the carpet was.
I think it was original, wasn't it? It was probably like. How old the carpet was.
What was the building, twenty-two, twenty-four, fifty?
Yeah, twenty-three years. It was old. If it were your house, you would've replaced it by now.
No.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the treasurer's report as prepared.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
House? President's report, okay. Can you hear me? Okay, good. Andy, Andrew and I and Ryan met with Penn Waste, because, as you know, we've been experiencing problems more and more frequently with our trash pickup. We've tried to be very accommodating for them, because we realized that during COVID, they've had trouble with, in, in keeping a number of employees. They've had trouble keeping drivers. But as it continued to blossom, we, we decided to have a meeting. So the reason for the meeting were the, uh, the reason for the service issues were that the drivers were switched out due to resignation, they had a lot of, loaders were turning over. Um, and it was acknowledged by, by our, our, our group in New Freedom that there are employment problems at a national level, but the contractual service had to be met. So they've taken action for six things. Uh, service logs are gonna be shared with the borough manager each day. The driver, uh, and loader for Singer is being replaced. All drivers will use a punch list or a check sheet to ensure all residences are served. Uh, roof training's gonna be conducted on weekends. The drivers are gonna stop in at the borough office at the end of their run to, uh, report, and also to see if any calls have been received, uh, for service. And on days when the drivers start early to, either for heat or for storms, the early roads will be run through one time before they leave the area to make sure that all the trash is gone. Uh, we agreed, the borough agreed, to wait two weeks until June twenty-seventh to give Penn Waste a chance to implement these six items. After two weeks, New Freedom Borough is going to exercise the penalty section of the contract if needed. Hopefully, it won't be needed, and they'll be able to, uh, and that basically gives New Freedom Borough the right to, uh, to deduct twenty-five dollars for each house missed. So it's a pretty hefty penalty. Uh, citizens shall be notified to call in not later than three-thirty to report trash issues. Andy's gonna put that on the Savvy Citizen. And citizens, uh, will be notified to put their trash out the night before pickup, just to make sure that it's out. I know some people try to rush, I know I've chased after the trash truck, so make sure that it's, that it's out there. Uh, and we thank Penn Waste for their continued relationship and look forward to resolving the issue. So, that was the meeting. Go ahead.
I, I just have a, a comment, um, as far as the IGC with Kim and going to Stewartstown Borough meeting this past week. Um, they had an issue there, and in their contract, I appreciate the twenty-five dollars for the missed house, but in their contract, if more than six homes are missed on a street, they have the ability to withhold two thousand dollars from Penn Waste.
Is that part of our contract also? I don't believe that we have a six.
We've seen the contracts.
Yeah, so Andy need to pull up the contract, because there is, there is a list of penalties. And it's all different for all different municipalities, so we just need to find out what.
Maybe, you know, maybe review sister communities and see kinda what they do, and maybe we could.
Yeah, that would need to be an update to the next contract.
Yes, for future.
Yeah, I mean, that, that contract is, I think, five years old or three years old, yeah.
I had no idea that would be.
Either it was a new company that bought it.
allowable like that.
We, we transferred the contract.
Yeah, it, it was an assigned contract, so it wasn't.
When is the contract up?
Uh, the end of this year.
So December.
We actually renegotiated, we have three, um, add-on periods, one year each, that we can do. Um, but the actual contract is up December thirty-first.
Okay.
So.
I believe Stewartstown had even discussed charging them what? Rebating back to a household that wasn't picked up each time five dollars and?
Three, three dollars and forty-two cents per miss. They kinda calculated out, that's kinda what each one was missed.
Yeah, we don't wanna create an administrative nightmare either, so.
Well, you know, if you're paying for something, you ought to get it. If you don't get it, you don't pay for it.
How, how do they determine when, when the house was missed? If the trash wasn't out at the time, who?
They have a, they have a camera on the truck. So, so they'll be able to see, like, you know, and when they pull up to my house, they'll see that my trash was not out, and, you know, so they, they can do that.
Good.
Singer, I think just about everybody puts theirs out the night before. And they didn't pick up anybody's on Singer from, I, I know, at least from High Street all the way down to the bridge and beyond. And that trash sat there for, I mean, we're getting into summer, that gets a little smelly. Well, and then we've got a problem also in town with foxes, with raccoons, and, and they love that stuff.
Speaking of, speaking of, do, do we have, Wade, maybe Wade, do we have a requirement that trash has to be put into a container? Because a lot of people send bags out, it's not foxes or raccoons, it's birds, I mean, crows.
Oh, yes.
You're sending that stuff all over the street, the trash guys aren't gonna pick that up.
It's, I, I read it, says, did you correct? Containers should be set at the curbside, uh, yeah, it's supposed to be in a container. Has to have a lid, I believe? Yeah, I think so.
Who gets, who writes those citations?
I'm sorry?
Does Wade write those citations, or does somebody else do it? Because we can start a list.
Give, hey. I, I think, let's, let's give Penn Waste the two weeks, I mean, it's only two weeks. Give them the two weeks to try to get things implemented that we've agreed on, and then see where we end up from there. I mean, and, and it's, you know, the, the thing you're gonna run into is if one person doesn't get their trash picked up, um, you know, you're gonna have to go back and pull the camera. And that's gonna work for some period of time, but if it's continually our fault, they're not gonna keep the cost of money to, to take time to go through the tapes and stuff, so. You know, I think we, you know, we're trying to build a, a sense of cooperation with them too, so. Uh, let's, hopefully, they'll be able to repair that, their reputation in the community. Um, the other thing that they did, which, which is a good thing, um, we also thanked Joel for the donation of the two free tre, years of trash, and that's gonna be given away at the concert in August. And he said that these free service donations are to be given, uh, in a free drawing to the citizens of New Freedom Borough to help foster a good relationship between the citizens and Penn Waste, and that he was happy to make the donation. So, I mean, they're trying to be good citizens too, and good, you know, to, to neuter it. They normally don't make trash containers for the Lions Club, Carnival, and, you know, so, you know, they're, they, they work with us, so let's try to work with them too. And hopefully, it'll be, it'll be resolved.
Tough business, and they've just taken it over. This is their first year, we've had COVID. Uh, it's, it's tough everywhere getting back in the saddle.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about is, uh, there's COVID relief money, it's coming to the municipalities. Um, we've talked about it before, we thought it was about four hundred and sixty K. We found out that it's four hundred and ninety K, so that'll be coming to New Freedom. Uh, you can use it for assistance to businesses, you can use it for housing, tourism. Uh, you can use it for hazard pay, although I don't think we've had to really have much hazard pay, although Donnie might have been a couple of times, but, you know. Uh, it also could be used for water and sewer and to protect water bodies. It can be used for cybersecurity, to protect our infrastructure, up to the amount of the lost revenue, which is kinda the gotcha in there, because we really didn't have lost revenue from, from, uh, the whole COVID thing. Our, um, earned income has been on par with, with what we're used to seeing. So when we get the first deposit, which will hopefully come sometime this month, next month, then council will have to sit down and figure out, what are we gonna do with the funds? And, not to slant anyone's opinion, but it would, it would be my opinion that we should try to protect the people's tax increases by using the money for things that we are buying this year. As long as it was bought after May third, we can use the money for that. And you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this.
March third, keep going.
Yeah, yeah, March, March third, what I said?
May.
Oh, did I? Yeah, March third, and.
Through twenty twenty-four.
And it's through twenty, actually, twenty twenty-six for some cases, you know?
Yeah, if you validated the project, approve the project.
Yeah, so, um, but we could use this to mitigate any tax increase for, uh, for the, uh, infrastructure that we're currently.
How much is this first deposit expected to be?
Half.
Half.
Half, okay.
So it'll be about two hundred and forty, forty-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred and forty-five, and then the second half will come?
They haven't told us yet.
Later.
But this, this year?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Treasury is really hurrying to get this money out. And we've.
And the state has, the state has to disperse it, so it's not like they can sit on it and.
We were one of the first to get the application in too, we got it anyway.
Do we have a timeline to use that?
Uh, I think that we probably should make a commitment on what we're gonna use it for by the end of the year. Um, it shouldn't be hard to do. I think what I would suggest that we do is go out to Donnie and to John at the, at the wastewater treatment plant and get a list of what they feel they. treatment plant and get a list of what they feel they need that we could use this money for. And that would be things that were already planned so that it decreases the level that we would need, those levels that we took. So, because they're drawdown ones, if we don't take them.
Is this something like for the security at the park? We've been kind of discussing that, cameras and so forth.
No, you can't use it for that.
So nothing for the park, really?
I understand, I understand it can be used for rec and parks. It can be used for one of the.
Well, it wasn't your webinar, but I've been on two other webinars.
You got to watch it because the bucket, you got to figure out which bucket. It's the infrastructure bucket. That is stormwater, sewer, water.
That's one of them.
Right, and if it's the other bucket, you have to demonstrate that you're allocating as a result of a loss of revenue. And that's the problem that we have here in the borough in order to take advantage of that bucket. Can't really show that we lost revenue. New York area tax bureau has been monitoring earned income taxes for every single municipality in New York County and they reached the conclusion that they believe is almost impossible, but not very difficult for those municipalities to show a loss of revenue. And therefore you really never get to that bucket. You got to look to one of the other buckets for allocation of funds. So although you may have been hearing on seminars, I think some of those seminars may have been relying upon, A, if you can show a loss of revenue, that's the most generous bucket with the most flexibility of loss of revenue. And that's unfortunately one that most New York County municipalities is not going to be able to take advantage of.
When you say it's flexible, Steve, you're talking about how you spend it, where you can spend it. Because you have to show that it came up short.
Right, exactly, because it's replacing money you wouldn't have anyway, so they let you put it anywhere. But we haven't had that. We can't show that.
On the CARES Act money, I had requested a report that showed what we used CARES Act money for. Was that part of some of the things that was lost revenue too?
I'm not sure about that. I didn't see your CARES Act report or anything.
Yeah, I had requested to see that. And one of the things with lost revenue.
Right, and I told you what we used it for. We used it for the bridge.
Right, that's right. And we also used that. But we did have lost revenue, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the lost revenue that we got from the lack of amusement tax, if we go back three years and average 17,000 a year, and this year we're only getting five, can we can pay ourselves back for the difference?
See, that's unfortunate part with this calculation, they don't look at specific line items. They look at revenue as a whole. And that's where most municipalities, if you look at it, their earned income tax really hasn't gone down when it was expected to go down. And unfortunately, you're seeing a lot of the real estate boom and transfer taxes being over what prior years were. Therefore, that's the other problem. You can't say, oh, let's look at this one line item, well, we're down, and therefore let's allocate that. They look at it as a whole.
Market team with 140 units and earned income, there's just no way to show.
Can we have an educational seminar on this? Because it sounds like it's going to be.
Anyone have anything else before I move on? Okay. The only other thing I wanted to mention was the roads. A couple of things had to happen before we paved the roads. Donnie and his group had to finish the stormwater management, which they did. They got it done in time for the paving. We also had to update and fix all of our crosswalks so that they were handicap compliant, kind of like making a change to a building. Same kind of thing. So we got all of that done and they started the roads today and we anticipate that they should be done in two weeks in time for carnival.
Weather permitting.
Well, I always weather permitting, you know, kind of goes with that same. That's all I have. Next up would be the mayor's report on the police department.
Well, why don't I go? I have a couple of things ahead of that. I'd like to thank Andrew and I'm sure Wade was a part of this. We seem to really be getting on the letters for ordinances for houses, for dilapidated properties, for non-mowing of properties. I know there was one property and I asked Andrew to look at and he ended up sending three separate letters to the one owner of that property because it's basically falling down for one. The other was the grass was 14 inches tall and I know there were some other ones that were like that. And we're finally getting some results thanks to Andrew sending out those letters. I appreciate that very, very much. Cumulation of junk, things like that. We're getting somewhere and I think that's due to us passing that new ordinance for what? Was that zoning?
Property maintenance.
Property maintenance. So we're getting somewhere on there. I know people have been a little impatient and complaining. We're getting there. It's going to take a little bit of time. We only have so many people, myself, if I see something, I bring it back. I think our borough employees, when they see something, they bring it back. Andrew's been driving around, even though he doesn't really have the time, you know, he's busy. Andrew's been driving around, taking pictures and documenting all of this stuff, so I appreciate that. One thing I would like to ask though is this morning, we had North Constitution Avenue shut down, half of it shut down because of paving. Again, the problem was we didn't let people know till after the fact. They started at 7 o'clock. Savvy Citizen went out at 7:05. I would really like to see these announcements go out the day before or the evening before so people know when they wake up. They're not going to wake up and look at Savvy Citizen. They're going to wake up, grab a bowl of cereal, out the door they go, and there they are, they're stuck. They could have gone a different direction. But like I said, it was stated that some of these were to start at 7 o'clock, but it didn't go out on Savvy Citizen until 7:04, 7:10.
Yeah, I have it on my list to talk to him about as soon as he gets back.
Well, I think some, that's the other question. While he's gone, and I tried to find this out, but while he's gone, he was in charge of Savvy Citizen and updating that.
Wade's doing the Savvy Citizen.
You are doing that, okay?
Personally, I'm the person who, I'll tell you, the office has a person, two people.
Okay, because if we have an emergency and as mayor, I need to do something, God forbid, something down here, Arrow Oil blows up and we got to, I know who to get to because we weren't.
If Arrow Oil blows up, we'll all know.
Well, you know, there are little things that happen from time to time, you know, with accidents and things like that. The chief lets me know ahead of time as soon as it happens and I can get that to you, Wade.
Wade, any idea how many people have signed up for Savvy Citizen, all part?
I think the last one that I recall going out said when we put residential only, because a lot of people signed up for residential only, it was about 100 to 200.
Okay, that's been a month ago. Because we've been continuing to put that on Facebook. I continue to put it on my mayor's page where a lot of people are sharing it and I'm getting a lot of gee, thank you for letting me know. I think it's very important. And if people choose not to download it, then don't complain because you don't know that the road's closed. I got to say that. Take advantage of it. You know, that's why it's there. But we have to be diligent too in making sure that the information is put out there as soon as we, as soon as we know it, not after the fact. Because we've got a lot of complaints about something last year. I've got something on the agenda here that I'll talk about later. Are we going to talk about speed at Kohler Point? Is that going to be brought up later?
Yes, okay.
Again, we have been attending Shrewsbury, Erica and I, Shrewsbury's meeting. Unfortunately, I don't know what happened. Glen Rock didn't have a quorum for their last meeting. Shrewsbury didn't have a quorum for this past meeting until 40, 45 minutes after it had started, so they decided to go ahead and had some things to vote on. Once again, I did get a request, when will they know about the sewer meetings?
Yeah, that's on.
I know, I know that's, you know, you've gotten all the questions.
They're the same questions.
In May, and I know, yeah, I know, I know. But I'm just passing on from our committee what they ask us to do, yes.
And Glen Rock this week goes back to meeting in person, so we'll be going to that one. It's been on Zoom. And one other recommendation that I would have is Shrewsbury and Stewartstown have their public works there and they give a report, a report of what they've done in the borough that month. They give a zoning report. The zoning person gives a detailed report of, you know, kind of what's going on, what kind of building within the borough and.
We have, we have a zoning and code enforcement report. We have, that's coming up here shortly. We have an engineering report, public works report. And we can beef it up if you want to know more little things that are going on.
Is it something that can be put in the agenda? Their whatever report that they submit?
It's in the agenda, we press it in the meeting. It's underwater system, wastewater system, zoning and code enforcement.
Right here, okay, for the water. And then what about the zoning?
Reports.
It's H. V, H. I, H.
H.
I missed it.
I saw it.
I'm going to go ahead and defer to Donno and the police commissioners.
The chief reported that over the past month, overtime was up a little bit in New Freedom. That was mostly due to the arsons that were experiencing. Administrative overtime was up in general and that is because Sergeant Smutten had to take over Sergeant Teague's administrative duties, but that was put between the two of them. Traffic enforcement was down for New Freedom for the past month. That was mostly due to all the ongoing roadwork in the area. Our solicitor brought up that our two SRO contracts were due to expire at the end of June. Both of the schools have requested to renew the contracts for three years. That was approved and the commission also voted to keep the cost to the schools the same for the next year. The commission approved spending $1,600 to purchase a stealth radar unit that'll be shared by the municipalities and it's used to track the busiest, busiest times for traffic and the highest speeds in the jurisdictions. Shrewsbury has one, they said we borrowed theirs before, so now we'll all have one to use. And in the beginning of June, the members of the personnel committee assisted with the police officer applicant interviews. We had two applicants that actually made it to the interview. One was from Hanover and one was West Henfield Township. The consensus was the applicant from West Henfield scored higher on the interview. He came in for a ride along last week. That went well. He was offered a C O E and accepted it. And he'll be moving on to the rest of the hiring steps, the polygraph, medical, the psych. And then we'll go ahead.
That pretty much sums it up. Now, they are getting, they feel they're getting a little bit ahead of this arson thing. I can't go into a lot of detail on it because it's still under investigation. They do have a few suspects, but it's, as I said, it's under investigation right now, so the information to the public is very limited, but no, they are working diligently on this because it's got to stop.
Yeah.
It's got to stop. Now, one of the things too is don't be afraid to report fireworks incidents. We're having some fireworks incidents. We had a major incident down here at the playground. I mean, it was a huge box. They sent you a picture of it. It was carnival fireworks in a big box. Kids set it up. It was about 9:30, 9:00, 9:30 at night, up in the air, some of them going sideways. There are people playing tennis in the tennis courts and the sparks are flying down on top of the people in the tennis court and people down at the equipment with their kids. I guess it was around 9:00, 9:30. I was ready to call the police and apparently one of the fire staff who has siren and lights went through the alley, turned their lights and their siren on. The kids thought it was a cop and everybody took off in every direction. And that's another reason that a little bit later I want to discuss the idea of trying to get cameras. Rec is in favor of it, get cameras down there so that we actually know who's doing it. Because by the time the police get there, they're, wherever they live, they're running away, they're up the alleys, you know, they're all over the place. And with this system, we can zoom in and we can actually see who the kids are. We can get their license plate numbers if they're in cars, because we've got a couple of kids down here playing.
Have you actually seen the system and you were able to zoom in with it?
Yes.
Because I pulled it up online and there's no way you would be able to zoom in on a license plate on my phone to take a look at.
Well, he's going to be here. We're not, this isn't up for a vote. I just wanted to discuss it at this meeting. I think everybody got a copy of it and he's going to be at the next meeting to discuss it. We'll put him on the agenda. He's going to have, be able to demonstrate and show you exactly what they have, because he showed us on his iPad from down at the park, he pulled up another park and he zoomed in on a car and you could, you could read the license plate. But we need to protect, we've got a million dollars invested and I think it's something that needs to be, protect our investment. Rec is in favor of it. It was their idea basically and they hooked us up with CIA is the name of the company. But that's kind of, it would help us tremendously. I think that's really, you all got the police report. I've been making sure that this is included. You can see everything that happens in New Freedom and I think that's important for you all to see what's going on, traffic related. It's traffic, mental health, missing persons. It's, it gives you a list of everything for each municipality, not just New Freedom. So please take a look at that and you can also keep track of hours and any of our overtime. We're in good shape. Chief takes good care of us. He monitors that a lot. We've got the SROs now that are out of school, so they're helping to fill in those other patrol times and fill in for Officer Teague and the officer that resigned. So they're in good shape. They're putting in a lot of hours, but we're going to be in good shape. That's about all I have.
Kim, what night was that fireworks thing?
I can tell you because I have a picture, I got a picture of it.
Yeah, because Kim and I have looked at it too.
You couldn't have missed it. I forwarded that, I hope I didn't delete it.
If you find it, I'm going to move on.
Yeah, move on, move on. I'll, I find it, I'll give it to you.
Okay. Managers report, Andy's on vacation. This is a vacation that he had scheduled prior to starting here. So he had scheduled it around his Spring Grove Borough manager's position, but he hadn't scheduled around ours. And we had agreed when we hired him that, since he'd already scheduled that had deposit down, that he was going to go ahead and take it. So that's why Wade is filling in tonight. Franklin Main, utility work. It's, paving is scheduled, was a schedule to occur mid-June and it has started. We got the crosswalks done, as I said before. We completed a review of the personnel manual and job descriptions and that's in here as a resolution later on tonight. We hired two. We hired two new employees, wanted to replace a Public Works employee and Victoria Waugh, who is a billing clerk. Is Victoria doing, Savvy Citizen? Okay, so she's, and she's filling in for Savvy Citizen too. Schema, we are, we got the joiner agreement. We didn't get it in time for this meeting, but we will be advertised, get it in for advertising and get it ready for council approval at the July meeting. The American Rescue Plan, we've already discussed previously. And Public Works renovations, we're gonna have a meeting with them. It's a Zoom meeting with Wade on Thursday, this Thursday. And website's coming along. I'm hoping that we get that up this, this next month. So that was the manager's report. Does anyone have any questions?
Can I just clarify my last question about the two reports?
About what again?
About, about the two reports, the water and the zoning. And I see it here, that's great. Usually what happens, they read it out themselves. The supervisor does. So that's, that's what I wanted to say on that. And, and the water is good because it gives detail down here, kind of what happened. The monthly inspection totals is just kind of numbers. Is there a way that that could be more clarified into something like this? So you kind of know who, are these a bunch of fences? Is Berkgentine doing something? Is there a new building happening? Is there some, how this, can that be clarified better?
Why don't you write up some recommendations for us and submit them? And then we can take a look and give them to Wade and Public Works and.
Why don't I get some of the examples from the other two boroughs?
That'll work too, yeah.
And bring, bring that, that might be good.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Good.
Okay, first, what's the listener?
Nothing, I had no action items from this evening.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet, but let's say we have cameras at the park and the cameras pick up some offender, whomever. Can we take that without that, obviously without knowing who that person is and put it on YouTube or our site so that if somebody in the borough can go, "Yeah, I know who that is," because we don't know who it is?
Police do it all the time.
Do we have a problem with, with some person's rights about doing that without considering?
I think once again, we need to promptly place statements when people are entering that facility that cameras are on and they're being recorded so that they know that that.
Yeah, I mean, it's one thing to get somebody on a camera. Nobody knows who it is. I mean, then you're like, even if it's a great picture. Okay.
We've completed the, the water and the de-watering improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. The water line replacements are, are completed. Kinsley Construction completed the concrete ramps. The slider tank replacement is in pro, in process for design work. And everything pretty much else is, no problems with any of the water line replacement. Do you have anything to add, Donny? For the engineering or the water, or the water report? Did you want to add anything?
No, we're good.
I, I have, I have a question. Because in the information Andrew sent, you were down at Summit Grove Campground and I guess you tested some of their lines and so forth. How did, how did they stand up? I mean, did you find anything significant?
We didn't find, we didn't find anything because they were down there. We did find that they had some valves turned on.
Yeah.
But wasn't there some valve on, where they had some of the eaks? But they didn't have anything, unfortunately, down there listening to anything. So, I mean, they still were gonna do their upgrade into a.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what they have to do.
Right.
I mean, you can fix all the leaves you want, but, I mean, the, the water shop, they're all.
Are they still using massive amounts of water?
They're not now, no.
No? Okay, good. I, I think it's not because they've got it all shut down. I mean, if you shut it down, they're not gonna use the water. But I, they owe us, the end of this month, an update on what they're doing for the repairs and maintenance. So, so once we get that, we'll, we'll know better.
I have, I have a question on water and you could probably know better than anybody. Apparently, I know Keystone is advertising that, I think it's the old parish farm out on 851. Keystone is advertising that they're building houses there. Now, that's Shrewsbury Township. But would Shrewsbury Township be using our water? It says houses starting at $550,000. I didn't know would they put wells in? There is no public water out here.
Yeah, but I don't think they do that, that's, that's figured out.
Okay, well, would they, would they be allowed to tap into our water supply?
I would think so.
Where? The old parish farm out on 851. It's gonna be called Country Club Overlook?
That's not contingent to Borough Property, is it?
Well, it's, it's right beside.
We've issued no permits for them to hook into our water as of this time.
Okay, I'm here, who's in charge of EDUs? Somebody's gonna be coming after somebody for EDUs for all those houses out there. Shrewsbury Township doesn't have EDUs. It's either Shrewsbury or it's New Freedom. What's gonna happen now when they put another 70, 80 houses out there? Plus, we're gonna be looking at another development.
Again, I'm not looking at the map, but are they contiguous to New Freedom Borough where its property is?
Yes, it's right across, 851, across is 851.
I don't think any of that, if, if it's a property that, I don't think any of that touches Borough property.
Yeah, so they would have to go through Shrewsbury Borough.
It's real dirt and close.
Well, they would have to go through Shrewsbury Borough wastewater pipes and that they would have to get approval from Shrewsbury Borough to go through their pipes. That's how that works.
But they don't have pipes out there. That's what I'm saying.
Saying we don't use them. I don't think, I think they would have to do something.
It's right, it's basically, it's across from Golden Point.
It's across the road from Golden Point?
If they want, if they wanted to, if they wanted to put in public sewers and/or water, there's a planning module process. If they were part of 537 Plan, which they probably weren't because it wasn't contemplated then. So there's a planning module process. They have to go through the township pass review and prove it. And then if it's to be New Freedom Borough water or sewer, it's gotta come to New Freedom from New Freedom's site up before it goes to EDP. And that, that's the time they have the discussion about it. But there is a, there's a planning module process that's a state, it's a state process that they would have to file about there if they want to put in Public Works or, or even on-site because it's gonna have to be approved one way or the other.
Yeah, even, even if it's septic, they have to get it approved. But they have not come to us to say they wanna run through Shrewsbury Borough pipes to get to our plant. So.
You're talking about this property with the cemetery on it? Or you're talking further down 851?
All I know is the old parish farm.
The one, there's, there's a road with that name.
No, 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 that's, that's, that's his brother. There's two parish farms.
See, I know you're talking about.
The one you're talking about by the cemetery, that's where Hamilton Overlook is.
Yeah.
Okay? This is out eight fif, going out 851 in back of your development. Okay? If you go around the curve, there's, I think it's Ceiling Road then.
Yeah, and then you go to Parish Lane.
If you go out Bowser's School, there's those big houses up there. It's back behind there. There's a whole development going in there with houses. I think it said start at 557, that's right, houses. Well, they're gonna want to buy them from us, I bet you.
Not if they, not if they've already done the development.
Well, they haven't. They're advertising for it.
So they haven't even broken ground?
No. No. But apparently they're planning on. They come out, well, that's a town. Somebody knew something I didn't know. Because if they're gonna try to tap in our water, we're talking about water. You know, we don't want to end up having to buy more water from Bureau Water Company because that's.
No, we would not, we, we, no.
That's something I do.
Okay. Well, you've already discussed about the letters that have gone out. One thing that Andrew pointed out was that these letters that go out can become part of a legal. So they're probably not something that we should put out in public, right?
Correct.
We need enforcement notices.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Rec.
Oh, not there, it's best one, yeah.
I think we have a copy of their report, which will bring up another situation. Apparently, all the doors, the locks have been changed. That's, that's all been fixed. That was a glitch in the system. We're actually in the process of replacing it. We actually late passed out some fobs tonight. It was just, you know, we're just trying, you know, we're bringing everything up to speed. And we didn't realize that the locks didn't work that night.
But is this door gonna be locked or is it gonna be kept open?
Which door?
The council chamber door.
Well, that's gonna be locked eventually, right?
At this point in time, it's gonna be left open? That you can access this facility to get your mail with your fob to get you through that second set of doors if the office is closed. Once everything comes in, depending on what the, what the status is that we get back, that door will then go on to a fob system also, like the second set of doors and everything will be accessible with the fob.
So those doors are gonna be open and we've got a lot of equipment and we've got a lot of personal mail and things that are, are, are private and.
Just the council room doors are open. The vestalum doors are locked.
That's what I'm saying. Anybody can come in here and look through our mail. Come on. I've been in here and there's nobody there. Somebody's going to the bathroom, you know.
Well, I mean, we could keep that door locked until we lock the front doors. And anybody who wants to come in and get their mail will have to knock on the door and come in through the office there.
Okay.
Let's do that.
I'm just not comfortable and I don't think the rest of you are with the investment we have in equipment. I agree.
I agree, that's fine. Yeah, it's just, but it's all being upgraded and.
And until we get the fob system in for here, that would be, that would work out. Are the rest of you that don't have a key okay with that?
They can still come in through the fob. Even if it's, even if it's locked and then they can.
But if it's locked, if it's, if it's after hours.
Then that door will be open if it's after hours.
Okay. You'll make sure that Wade, your, your folks back here will make sure that once the doors out here are locked, this is open. Because nobody's got, none of us have any more keys to this.
Well, that's what they have to be until they get it fixed. And right now, the system is old. There are no repair parts for it. So that's why it's being upgraded. It just, that, it just won't work. So once we get the new system in, everything will be fine. But during the interim, that's a little bit of that.
True. You got a fob?
Yes.
You got a fob?
I did, I did want to mention that, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how to say this, but Tanya did not get the, the trash or the free trash from Penn Waste to run at the third concert. When she got that, there actually was not a third concert. We only had one concert on the books. Penn Waste has specifically requested that be a free drawing. So that's what we're gonna do. And it's already been advertised, it's being done at the first. Actually, if we would have known about it, we would have had it sold at all three concerts because that would have been better for the borough. But since we've advertised it's gonna be at the first concert, that's what we'll just stick with that. So that's in their report. Do you have any other?
I think Mary Ann is gonna forward to the office. They only had the fact that there was gonna be a parade. Andrew didn't want to post it on Savvy Citizen until we had a route in times. Now we know it's gonna be, begin at 4:30. Since we're recording, maybe people will pick this up. The, the parade will begin and stage at the community center? Come, that's what I was told. Where did, where were you told?
I, I had read somewhere else that it was gonna be on Schaefer again, but.
Well, starting, they'll be at the community center and go back to Schaefer. Because you're gonna have a lot of trucks.
Back up and then back down.
And then we'll go down Main Street to Broad, left on Broad, past Rudders to High, up High and then be complete at the Carnival Grounds. The Carnival Grounds will be open early that night so we don't lose the crowd. Before, we always had it at 4:30. The parade was over at 6:00. The grounds weren't open till 7:00 or 7:30. This way, they're gonna open right at 4 o'clock along, or 4, 4:30 so that people can take advantage of that and we don't lose them. Because that is probably gonna be their number one night, Friday and Saturday for the Lions. And they're really looking forward to this fundraiser, let me tell you.
Do you know, has Lions Club either gotten or requested from the Carnival Dender a bond to repair the park if there's damage?
They said it would be taken care of. I don't know about a bond, but they said it would be taken care of. Did we make Lodge get a bond for the car shop? That was just Saturday?
I don't think so.
Because I was concerned about them burning out afterwards and tearing it up. Everybody was fine. I mean, they said they'll take care of any, anything.
Heavy, heavy trucks.
Yeah, there's a lot of the kicking wheelers and everything.
You did?
They've always had a bond for Carnival.
I will go to get to President. I will call him tomorrow.
Appreciate that.
As a matter of fact, I will see him tomorrow because our installation of officers is tomorrow night in the dinner. And I will ask and get back with you, to you on Wednesday.
Did you want to talk about the proposal for the cameras at all? It's interesting.
Yeah, maybe we can go over that. So Rick Arby did come up with a proposal through this CIA crime investigation alarm company. Just a lot of information to go over. You had a couple of pictures here. You guys said that you've seen some of these cameras in, in use?
The police, our police department uses them. The wastewater treatment plant.
I have seen.
That we use.
Yeah.
The same company. Now, these are updated, newer models of the cameras.
Yeah.
They're 4K, they're infrared, they're just state of the art.
Well, they're not, they're not entirely wireless. They've got a trench tat 5K across the park.
Some, you have one spot.
I thought it was all.
Now, there's one spot that they're going to have to do that down to, I think, to the parking lot.
Oh, yep, okay, I saw the old ones that were wireless.
Yeah, they are. There, there'll be dish. As long as they can get a dish that comes up to this building, you know.
So it operates on a line of sight?
Yes.
Type of system, okay.
Yes, other than the one.
I have a whole bunch of questions about it. Are you done, Ryan?
Well, the only other thing I was gonna say is it's $18,500 for this, it's a total investment, half down. Balance due upon.
I thought it was 15. It's 18, five.
Eighteen, five.
And then it's, and then it's $80 a month after that.
Yeah, so I, I have some questions about that. What, what exactly that gets you? But also something that's that expensive, I think we need to spend a couple of months thinking about and then make that a budget out of next year.
Well, he will be here at the next meeting to answer any questions anybody has. But this, we thought he could be here at this meeting. He couldn't make it, he had other obligations. So it was already on the agenda, so we passed this out. One thing I talked to Andrew Schaefer about, I know we are going to be doing a resurface of municipal parking lot. I have asked him since we are going to be doing that and we're asking our folks in town to use the municipal parking lot, especially during winter storms, to park there. to park there. I think we need to invest in additional lighting, LED lighting, because that place is dark at night and I wouldn't want my wife down there at 10 o'clock at night or at 4:00 in the morning when it's dark and they're picking up the car after a snowstorm.
That whole place is lit up by the tennis court.
There, by the tennis court, but the, the parking lot is not. Those, those lights, those lights are kind of centralized into the court with two out into the equipment. There's one light that's way down here and that's the only light and it only lights this up. I can sit on my deck and watch the drug deals happen in the dark areas. So that's what I'm going to do. Putting one right in the center because that's going to help these cameras to pick up and that's going to act as a deterrent for the kids that are down there. Because, I mean, I see it three, four times a week and...
What, what are you trying to, I guess, I guess we need to say, like, what are we trying to accomplish with the cameras?
We're trying to protect a million dollar investment?
No, you're not. Because a million dollar investment is basically dirt and, and you're not, you're not, you're not going to protect.
How much do, we put $300,000 into the tennis court that we've actually surfaced already?
Well, actually, that, Donnie said that the, the company that was fixing the tennis court resurfaced that we didn't really pay for that. I do agree that the tennis court needs protected. But the, but the, the bottom line, I mean, I'm, I saw the bid and I looked at it. I mean, I, I talked to Donnie and Donnie, you said there was $2,000 in graffiti type damage? I also talked to Chief Ottington and he said that we're not going to prosecute kids for graffiti. I mean, you're not, that's just not going to happen. Why? Because you're not going to, you're going to, they're 14 years old and they're going to get a slap on the wrist. I mean, and you're going to spend, who's going to go?
They don't do it again.
Who's going to go to court to sit with these people and, you know, and, and to spend the time investigating? And your 2.8 millimeter camera lens that the, that these cameras have, the identification range is less than 50 feet. When you take those, well, even if you look at the pictures that are included, the pictures that are included in there, if, if you look at that and you say, okay, I want to read that license plate, it becomes painfully obvious that you're not going to be able to read a license plate from, from more than 50 feet.
That's why he's coming to the next meeting.
Well, yeah, and I, and that's good because, you know, like I said...
Because they're panoramic, you know? They can move, they can zoom in.
Well, who does that? Who's going to make them move and zoom in?
Well, if they're here during the day and, and the kids are down there during the summer...
That's not going to happen. We're not, we're not going to have, this isn't Baltimore City.
Give me the ability. I live right there. I can do it on my iPad. And I can go click and when there's a kid down there, or four kids down there like last week setting off fireworks, I can zoom in, I can click, I, we got a picture.
The question I have too going along with Amy is the, is the resolution good enough to identify a person? You know, you can get a picture and we've had the problem before with cameras. Yeah, we can see there's individuals out there, we can't identify them. Picture, the, the video quality is not good enough to be able to identify a person, even if you put them in a lineup.
Well, in, in Baltimore City, they actually have a police officer sitting at a control panel and they zoom in and they, they, they could do, and they could actually dispatch the police. They could say, there's some crime going on over here, but we're not going to do that for a park. It's just not going to happen.
You're going to have a video...
So whether or not you can zoom in is almost irrelevant. What the problem is, is identification is 50 feet. And you, you have four cameras and most of them are further away. Five cameras, all right. They're still going to be mostly more than 50 feet. And Chief pointed out that Kinsley, they had their, their cat parked down there and a window was broken.
I'm sure.
You know, and he said, you know, camera might help with that. And I looked at the thing and I said, yeah, darn it, a camera's pointing there. And so it wouldn't have. The problem, the problem that you run into is you're spending, over the course of 10 years, between the, the, the cameras and everything, you know, you're spending $960 a year times 10, that's $9,600 plus 18.5. And that assumes that you don't need a camera replaced ever. So that's $28,000 to, to try to stop $2,000 of vandalism. Will you be able to even recognize people? I mean, we already talked about this one time. You recall I had my black hoodie on and I said, this is what you're going to see. Because you're going to see a guy in a mask and a black hoodie and you're not going to be able to identify the person. So I will, I will be more than happy to listen to the guy. I will be more than happy to listen to the guy, but my first blunt shot out of the tube is, I'm spending $28,000 over a 10-year period and I'm not going to catch anybody. And if I do, the majority of our crimes are slap-on-the-wrist kind of stuff. They're not going to be prosecuted where you're going to get $20,000 in restitution.
You don't know because right now, they're not getting caught. They're just, they're getting away with it. They're getting away with the drug crimes, they're getting away with...
Well, you're still going to get away with drug crimes because if they see a camera...
If they see a camera, they're going to go someplace else.
They're going to go someplace.
They're not going to be down there doing it.
And with all, and with all due respect to Chief Ottington, he said, well, if you give me cameras, I might be able to catch somebody. And I said, well, Chief, under that set of circumstances, you would want to put cameras all over the town, right? Let's put it on every street because, you know, it would cost a fortune, but you would catch more criminals.
Chief, where it does it, they've got it on their streets.
And they've got it at the park too, but I think you probably have, you would probably have just a... And what do they get out of them? That's my only point. I'm, you know, we're asking the people to spend $28,000 of tax money and I need to know what I'm...
That's why I asked the question about parks and recreation. I still am not convinced that we can't use some of that ARPA money for this.
Well, Mr. Hollis just told you you can, so I'm going to go with him.
They're, they're changing this every...
Okay, well, thank you. But, you know, I, I do want to make a cautionary note here. The money that is out there that we're getting from, for COVID relief, it's real money. I mean, just because you get it, you know, if I get a bonus from work, I could go spend it at the casino, I could take a vacation, or I could put it into a retirement account and save money. I would rather save the citizens of New Freedom money on a tax increase or at least mitigate it. It'll make it less of a tax increase for next year.
And then you're using it for that.
Well, you are if you, if you don't pay out the loan or you pay down something that you were going to buy anyway, which we are allowed to do as long as it was purchased after March 3rd.
After March 3rd.
So, yes, I, you know, I think that's where you use the money. You don't find things to buy. You really do have to do an analysis and see, what am I getting out of this? If you convince me that the citizens are getting something out of it...
I told Rec I would, you know, I would just briefly speak about it because you weren't, you weren't at the meeting. We wanted you to be involved. We wanted, um, who, what's his name, Rick, Richard? Richard couldn't be here tonight, so we put that off till next, next meeting so that the representative from the company can be here. And, I mean, I'll ask him to set up whatever he can here and...
I will come, I will come, I will come with an open mind, but I'm, it's $28,000 and, you know, they're, they're going to have to convince me that they're going to be preventing an awful lot of, of damage for $28,000. $2,000 in 10 years, Donnie said, of taking the graffiti off. That's, that's, we, we would lose $26,000 under that scenario.
Over the, over the years, that was, that was because the, the neighborhood stopped going down and scrubbing them once a week. We used to go down and, and scrub those every week, the graffiti off of those, the old equipment.
$28,000 to try to stop graffiti and you're not going to stop that. People will, people will still write Harry Love Sally on the sliding board and that's just... But I'll wait, we'll see.
I think we have to respect the, you know, the, the money that's already been put into there and try not to see it destroyed. Or if it is destroyed, make somebody accountable.
If people were destroying things, I would agree with you 100%, but no one has destroyed anything. No one has done anything other than, than a couple of times they put graffiti on, which we took off. I mean, that, no one is destroying any park equipment or any...
Mainly, mainly because we've got people in the neighborhood that are calling the police every time something happens and they're showing up and they're getting the kids off the basketball court, they're getting the kids off the tennis courts with the bicycles, with, with skateboards, you know? The ones that are down there breaking the equipment, the picnic tables that we happen to catch because there are good citizens that are taking pictures and reporting it to the police that they can catch them.
Kim, were they prosecuted for the...
Yes, they were.
Misdemeanor felony, they had to pay restitution?
They had to pay restitution and I'm pretty sure they got a, they were cited.
I guess Chief Ottington said he would not go after misdemeanor.
I don't know if it's a misdemeanor, but I know I had to. Because I personally had to file a report with the police because I witnessed it and I had the pictures of it.
Okay. Let's wait until next month to see what the guy says. Okay. I think that brings us to the resolutions for recreation committees. Did I miss any committees? Okay. Unfinished business, we have the council chambers, audio/video system quotes. And I think, and they have something about that?
Yes. Kim, what we were talking about, what, $22,000 or $25,000? I don't remember exactly what the, the amount was. I gave a lot of thought, just like you're thinking about this camera business. I feel at this time, you know, with, with the Zoom at Glen Rock and Shrewsbury has the Zoom and it's worked, you know, that we use that, we use them. I would be in favor of it if we use, and here we go, ARPA money.
I think we could probably use that money.
Could you really?
I think we could because that is, that is for a health, that is for health. It's, we already know that we're going to prob, you know, they're already forecasting in October, November, we're going to have another surge.
You make my...
Could we have another variant? I think everybody needs to, you know, we have people, I know I saw on Facebook tonight, somebody was saying they couldn't make it to the meeting. This would give them an opportunity to come to the Zoom meeting and participate.
See, under those, under those conditions...
So I'm in favor of this $20,000.
Because, do you see my point? Because we've had the COVID, things are slowing down, water is going up, all the expenditures here. You know, when I go to my church, I get, you know, the street and everything, they get me. So I just couldn't see spending $22,000 or $20,000, you know, for that at this time. But the ARPA thing, that would be a good thing, wouldn't it?
What, Amy, what, what, what will this, what will this...
I have hearing, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right. I can... We're not talking about these two large screen TVs here, are we? Is this...
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
See, I, I have a, I have a problem with paying for the buck on that. What, how does that help anybody if, if we've got a screen that somebody here is going to look at or council people are going to look at? If somebody wants to look at it from home, it's one thing. But my understanding is that, I don't, I don't see how that, how that helps.
I'm not sure why we need two. I, you know, I think that we have one, I think we have one piece of... Well, but I think if you put it right there, the people here can look at it. I mean, really, the only purpose to it is so that you can look at the person that you're talking to. So if, so if, yeah, presentations, it could be used for, you know, you can show slides. The guy did that night, David, he could have put his slides up on, on that screen, you know.
If, if that's, if that's the case, because we're talking about one that everybody can see, you know, it's not entertainment.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up.
Yes, I mean, that's a little different. Then it seems to me they have to revise this quote for that because we're not talking about the same thing anymore.
Yeah, but I think that we could, we can approve a NOT to exceed, you know, tonight.
We even talked about the possibility of us getting our own TVs. You can buy a 70 or 75-inch, inch screen TV now for $500 and under. So they're, they're looking at, what, $7,000, I believe, in equipment and the rest of it's in labor.
But I, but I don't, I don't think the TV is, is, the TV is a small part of it.
Well, we were, one of them was looking at an 80-some inch TV. We don't need 80-some.
Yeah, no. I think if you put it right there, I think most people would be able to see that. Council will be able to see it. Most of the people in the audience would be able to see it. So I'm thinking one TV would be fine and then...
That saves 500 bucks.
Yeah. Well, that's fine. 500 bucks is 500 bucks.
Good.
So that's, that's what I, that's what I would, I would respect your, your decision. Yeah, I think I would. And I am correct that we could probably use money for that, right?
You know, the advice I provided Friday is that...
I don't think we want to hear probably.
At the time, you wanted to decide what you would like to and just research it to ensure that it fits. I, I agree with you that if you're coupling in the fact that it's going to be used for Zoom technology so that everyone can see a person that's participating via Zoom, the case of the pandemic, whatever, you're getting a lot closer to being...
Because we can kind of phrase it.
I'm going to say we could probably word it somehow.
Can you make the motion to...
Now I'm going to make the motion.
Yes.
Do it only if you can pay for it out of an ARPA. I mean, if I, if I need to invest $20,000, I'd do it on the playground, okay?
Yeah.
Seriously.
And I was going to make that motion that we do it if we get the ARPA, you know, if, if we get the money. But our solicitor said we have to wait to see if we get the money.
I, I think, well, let's put it this way. I could, I could tell a story now if you really wanted me to. You know, we had, you know, whenever I was president of SYC, people would come to us and they would say, I'm directing you to use this money for football. And it's like, okay, we'll use it for football. But that means I don't have to give football more money this year because I'll, because I'll spend it on baseball because you already had this directed donation. So I, my, my point of the story is, I'm sure that we could figure out a way to take the money from here that would be an, something that we could allocate and put it over here and then spend the money that we're, this money differently. So I, I am, I would almost guarantee that...
Okay, so I can make the motion that we look into that, right?
Well, this is already a quote. I mean, the quote's going to go away if we don't approve it tonight, basically, which is okay. We could get another quote, we could ask them to extend the quote. You know, but, you know, it's up to you. I mean, I, I'd be happy that you entertain a motion to have a NOT to exceed of...
I think it was $700.
I'm sorry?
I think it was $700.
No, the total with the labor is 22,838.
Not to exceed, I think it was 22,000 some, wasn't it?
22,838.
22, yeah. I make a motion not to...
Did we make a copy? Yeah. Coast Guard.
It was 22,000 some.
Yeah. I thought it was 22,000. 22,838.
22, okay, I'm sorry.
All right, I was looking at the equivalent.
So, I mean, if you probably, if you did a NOT to, if you made a motion for 22.5, that would probably...
Okay, I make the motion for 22, not to exceed 22.5.
Kim, is your motion still contingent upon where the money comes, using ARPA?
Yes, definitely, yeah, definitely. The money has to come from ARPA.
And I'll send it to the best...
Three second now.
Well, again, again, if you specify that the money specifically has to come, then you're going to have to wait. And, and that's okay. We can let this quote expire and then we could get another quote. I don't know if it'll go up, down, or sideways, or, you know, it could just stay the same. So I would, I would think, I, I, I mean, it, it, it's not a motion really to do anything because we're going to have to wait to see if, if the ARPA money actually, you know...
Can we find out something by next meeting, July, July meeting?
It's a good possibility of, so, well, I mean, the money should be here, so we should have all the guidelines.
Should we have the money then with the guidelines? So I make the motion that, that we have a resolution of this problem by next, by July's meeting.
I think, I think probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think probably the appropriate motion would be to table this till the July meeting and ask for a 30-day extension of the quote.
All right. I'll table it till the, to July meeting.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
I have a, I have a quick question. You said something about a 30-day...
You said something about a thirty-day extension on the quote? And so we're going to ask them that in the motion, as a result of the motion?
Right, when Andy gets back, he can call them and see. I think, I think they'll probably do it. I can't imagine if they wouldn't unless something strange happened.
So we can extend it into July, the thirty days would be into, that we still would have the same quote, yeah, that's good.
And could we also say that we want the vote to reflect, we only want one?
Right.
One total, one total.
And you can even make it twenty thousand.
One TV comes off the bill.
Well, we said, you know, Andy said last time, if we want, we can get our own TVs.
Yeah, that might even work. But just make sure that it comes up. You know, I just don't think the citizens should have to pay for that, you're very strong about that.
When we don't know how many people are going to be involved, like I said at the last meeting. There were, there were two people at Shrewsbury's meeting zoomed in. There were four on Glen Rock's zoomed in. That's a lot of money to pay for four people or two people that are going to take advantage of it. It's kind of hit or miss.
It is, but, you know, the other side of that too is if you have an issue that's important to people and you have a hundred people who would really like to zoom in, you know, I think it kind of makes it worth it. And we're obligated, I think, to provide as much information to people as we can, you know. I mean, so this does that for them. Okay, so it's tabled for a moment.
Okay.
Okay. Next thing is the Kohler Point traffic study. What Andrew is recommending is that an actual traffic speed study be completed. The traffic study that was the speed trailer by Southern Regional Police doesn't allow us to set a speed that would be enforceable. So what he's suggesting is that council give him authorization to obtain a written proposal from Traffic Resource Group, which I guess is pretty much who everybody uses for their speed traffic studies for the streets within Kohler Point.
I'll make a motion to do that.
And I have a question, two questions actually. Have we released the bond on Kohler Point?
I don't think, yeah, there's still a small bond.
I thought that the contractor developer would still be responsible for that now?
That would not be in the bond.
That would not be in the bond.
Public improvements and a traffic study would not be included in this.
Stormwater.
Okay, all right. Well, the other thing is, when I was at the police commission meeting, oh, I guess this month or last month, they, Shrewsbury has a certified person, Brian Schweitzer, who does this. He is certified, he does it for Shrewsbury and Shrewsbury Township. And they're willing to let us use him at forty-five dollars an hour. Now, how much are we going to pay for this other company that we could, isn't this part of our intergovernmental commission? The agreement that we're trying to work together with, we loaned equipment to Glen Rock, you know, and they paid a flat fee. This is, if this guy's qualified, yeah.
Yeah, you have to just meet one requirement. So many, there's many different people that can do it and he's qualified to do it. Very few officials have the ability to do that. Some police officers are qualified to do it, so these kind of qualifications.
Came up at the police.
And they'd like to use our Streets Week for next year and they said that there's a possibility if we want to barter, they'll take the forty-five dollars off of.
How many hours is a study?
I don't know, but, well, we could ask.
It's a lot of hours. I mean, I don't, I think you set it up though and walk away from it. I don't think, I don't think you have to set that one then, yeah.
I can get a hold of Brian.
Can you go ahead?
I can get a hold of Brian and see, how long will it take? You don't have to do the whole development, I don't think, do you? They're just looking mainly at the one street that goes, is a cut through from eight fifty-one to Front Street.
And that'd be something that Brian would know because in order to have a forcible speed limit, you have that traffic study. I don't know if he's standing saying of four streets, I can do two and then, you know, come up with a number.
Well, standard residential is twenty-five miles an hour, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay, so we want to make sure that that, what's the name, what is the name of that street?
Logan.
Logan. We want to make sure that Logan, which is the real problem, has a street study done and we can put that in at twenty-five miles an hour and be able to uphold that. Now, they're looking at the radar bills supposedly going through.
Oh, yeah.
The House and Senate, that's.
I would entertain a motion to get a quote from Brian at Shrewsbury Borough.
Yep.
More.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to get a quote from Brian from Shrewsbury Borough to do a study on Logan with the intent of putting up a speed limit sign.
Don't you want speed limits throughout the entire felony?
Well, we do, yeah. But I think, I think that. So you'd have to do every street to put it through.
Well, that's what I want Brian, Brian will know the standard.
If you did the main cut-through street, if all the side streets should be the same.
They're residential, so they're twenty-five.
I'm not going to jump to that conclusion.
Okay, yeah.
I think that's for later.
So then let's find out what Brian says.
Well, Wade said it's twenty-five, right?
Yeah.
Wade? Residential is twenty-five, correct?
We'll find out. Who made the motion? Dennis made the original.
You know, I would like, I'd like, it should be done because if there's a speed problem over there, then she has to have something forcible. Regardless of who's going to do it, how it gets done.
So we're good with that?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My vote is aye.
Thank you, Marshall.
Just another discussion with regards to that development. Who has to put in, who has to paint the yellow lines? Did Danny Donnie go?
Do you have to because it's the neighborhood, most neighborhoods, I don't think have painted lines.
Mine doesn't.
Mine doesn't, but Art doesn't. I'd say mine doesn't.
Yours doesn't? No, well, you don't have sidewalks. Mine does.
Give me sidewalks now.
Constitution does, all of High Street, they do.
We've got a question.
I live directly across from that development and it concerns me for the safety because there is no crosswalk to go across that development from the trail. The majority of the people walk in my yard, that's on the other side of the trail up to Logan and then cross over. They cross diagonally usually across that road. And it's little kids on bikes and, I mean, a lot, a lot of people. I mean, all the people that go into Summit Grove, all those people cross over there at McCullough Avenue and the little picnic table and there is no crosswalk.
I got shot down by Andrew on that crosswalk over there. For what reason? Well, you know, a lot of times a crosswalk slows people down too.
I mean, it's, I didn't know if there's a safety issue, if they could do something about that because it just, it concerns me that I'm going to see somebody get hit. Because, I mean, the little kid, they cross diagonally, they cross the, I'm just in Ocean City and that's where their big thing is no sidewalking and that's exactly what those people are doing. And Front Street, believe me, they're not doing thirty mile an hour down Front Street when they're going down into the town. They come down to that hill at fifty mile an hour, so.
Front Street, I know.
You know, Front Street wouldn't be included in the traffic study, right?
No.
No.
But it's a problem, I agree.
But you can still put a crosswalk.
Yeah.
This is something I thought I should bring up.
No, yeah, no.
No, I agree, it's been brought up before and we were looking at doing there. We were looking at doing High Street, we were looking at Franklin and we were looking at Main. Now, we are putting major crosswalks in, I don't know, currently, we're doing.
Okay, they're in, well, I mean, they're being after them.
Right, they have to put them in as they pave because they have to set the material. It's not just painted. The material gets set into the mecatum and then, you know, it's, it glows in the, you know.
The way they did it off and did it, they brought the sidewalk down to stop.
Yet, High Street is like a second on the agenda. And now you're saying maybe up at Logan, we could take a look at that. Even if we just get reflective paint and put that on, it costs nothing, forty dollars.
They stopped the sidewalk at Logan, they didn't bring it down in front to the people who come out of the development and walk down on the other side where the development side is and then cross over to McCullough. So they're really, they're crossing over onto my private property, which, like I said, I'd rather see the people walking by grass than walking the road.
Yeah.
But it seems like the crosswalk, sidewalks should come down, go to McCullough and have a crosswalk come across from McCullough. Seems like what would be the safest place for people that are leaving Summit Grove, coming out of Summit Grove and out of the development. And I mean, there are a lot, believe me, a lot of people that come across there, so.
Summit Grove is using our park more and more every year.
Yeah, well, with the train, yeah, with the train coming through and they, yeah. All right, I will take an action to talk to Andy about the crosswalk at Logan, we can get that.
And high, if you would. That's just painted.
Okay. Okay, the next item I have that you should have in your packet, it's a resolution twenty twenty-one dash, whatever it's going to be. And it points Andrew Lanker for a term through December of twenty-one. Johnny Mason, December thirty-one to twenty twenty-two. William Taylor, December thirty-one to twenty-three. And Rodney Romek of the Alden that for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one for the zoning commission.
I'll make a motion for the resolution number twenty-one tonight.
Whatever, yeah, sorry.
A second then.
Okay, I have it for a second, Andy just. What would we, I'm sorry.
I have a question. When are you going to reaffirm the planning hearing board?
We are, we're doing that too. Yeah, that'll be, that'll be probably next meeting. Yeah, we're trying to catch up because apparently we left some holes and I hadn't realized it until, you know, a month ago.
Are there requirements for members of this?
You have to be a citizen.
That's all.
That's pretty much it, yeah.
No courses, no?
No, but I mean, it's, you know, I mean, if they want, you know, basically it's looking at.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the other one. That requires courses, I believe, doesn't it, one year on?
We take them, but on our own.
Yeah, you take them on your own.
Yeah, it's not, even that's not required. On zoning, you basically look at the items that are required and as long as they check off all the boxes, you're good.
I mean, did, okay.
I haven't, I don't think I've finished. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Pose.
Do we know what number that is?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll do it later. Okay. Okay, the Personnel Committee reviewed the Personnel Manual for, I guess, actually Anne had written it some time ago and Andrew pulled it out and revised it, dusted it off. We reviewed it, it did a lot, it did a lot of good things. It standardized our personnel policies across all of the departments. It also talks about comp time and sets some guidelines for that. It's a good, it's a good manual. It's in your packet, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to peruse it, but we have a resolution to, for setting the policies and procedures and establishing job descriptions for persons employed by the Borough of New Freedom. And it is also twenty-one, twenty-one dash something or another.
Forty-one plus one.
So we need a motion to adopt our new personnel.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Personnel.
But, no, no, wait a minute.
I have a question about that. I was concerned with being a council member and so forth. How legal is it, everybody that gets employed by the Borough? Should they not come before the entire council?
No.
Who makes it? Well, I have a paper here, if you would like to read it. It was done by, you know, a study by the state and so forth.
It's E code.
That E code, yes. Is that still stand, is that standard for us?
I think it's E code.
E code, it is E code, E code three sixty.
Any employee must be approved by now.
Any employee should come.
But that is what happens. Whether you have interviews or whether you have a subset of the group that reviews the applications, we have to, as a council, approve every applicant, every new employee. You had all the information when you had, when you hired Sam and Shaver.
We have a new employee back here, nobody would know that.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up.
It says we can't add employees, we can't add employees unless.
I'm not, I'm more than happy to look into this. When you say E three sixty, is that the Borough code that is one? That's the.
And I'm just wondering because.
Can you pass it on?
And just be aware that the Personnel Manual is the frank, it's the terms and conditions of employment, it's the policies, it's a lot of different things. I guess, you know, once again, today is the first time I've seen this. Does it say who hires? Is it something that's contrary to what's being provided? Does it say that the Borough manager administrator has the authority to?
I think it does. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should.
Can hire with approval of council?
Well, it's subject to the recall of council, which means that if I, you know, if Borough Council decides they don't want them to hire, then you don't.
No, it says, it says that anybody hired has to be approved by the council.
Can I just make one suggestion about management of this meeting? Typically in a municipal meeting, first Borough Council fully debates the issue. And at that point in time, it's opened up to questions to the audience. And therefore, in order to orderly run the meeting, it's typically let the Borough Council fully debate the issue and then we'll take questions. It's, just, it's a good practice, it's the best practice.
It is, you're right.
This is, this is titled Specific Powers and Duties. So the Borough Manager Administrator shall include the following. Hiring and discharging employees he shall hire and, when necessary for the good of the service, shall discipline, suspend, discharge any employee out of his supervision, provided the prior approval of council shall be obtained before enlarging staff by creating a new position. We didn't enlarge the staff. We're actually down two employees and AJ's hire was to replace somebody who quit. So we're not enlarging that, we're enlarging the staff to do this.
So, how about the Borough Office? We didn't have the people that were in the office.
There was one for many years ago that they never rehired.
Right.
We had an open position. But let me, let me just say that the Personnel Manual that we just reviewed and approved says that you need two levels. So in other words, let's say Donnie quit and we hired a replacement for Donnie. It would have to be the Borough Manager and Council President would have to interview that person. And we probably would get approval of council at that level of a person. But if Donnie is replacing a worker, then it would be Donnie and the Borough Manager. So it's always two levels, two levels required.
But in this proposal, it says everybody gets council approval.
Right.
Where does it say that?
Number, page five, page seven of the file. Upon council's approval, the Borough Manager will appoint the employee of the Borough.
Right, and council has approved, just like what Inga said, we've approved for him to hire people two levels. That's how it works, that's how we have it set up.
Right, but the way I read it is the Borough Manager has ever designated or both determine the mo- or both determine the most suitable candidate. Upon a council's approval, the Borough Manager will appoint this, the employee to the Borough.
Yeah, because it doesn't appear as if the Borough Manager has unfettered authority to, to hire. It has the unfettered authority to interview and go through that process. But then the Borough Manager, um, and will determine the most suitable candidate. Upon council's approval, the Borough Manager will appoint the employee. So this clearly contemplates that that, your, your new policy that you're approving is consistent, but if that says that it's Borough Council that has the authority.
The council's, is there, is there someone that represents council? For instance, if the council president is consulted representing the council, if we.
No, it is, it's council's.
It's kind of a approval. Yeah, okay.
But I, my question, my question would be, do we change this to match what the, what the, what this says? Because this says that the Borough Manager can, can hire with council approval.
With council approval, that's what this says.
That's what it, the same thing.
That's what the enlarging of the staff.
Right. No, that, what, what it says is Andy can go out and hire people to replace working staff. That's what this code says. The Personnel Manual does not match the code.
You're correct.
Right, yeah.
I have a question.
So I would suggest we change the Personnel Manual to match the code.
That, that, that is what I'm getting at.
Right.
So you agree with me?
I agree with you, yeah.
So we ought, we ought to, you know, we ought to do that.
Well, we're taking it away from the Borough Council that way, right?
Right.
Well, you're not taking it anyway because the current code says that the manager has the authority to, to hire replacements, but not enlargements.
Right.
Okay.
Because the position has already been budgeted.
That's good, that's a good place.
Yeah. I think that was your name.
Do we have more discussion?
Right, right, let me just, you're gonna have to give me a minute.
That's all right.
And Ryan, you remember where it says, talks about two levels to hire?
Uh, not off the top of my head, but I do remember at least one, one place in here. You say two levels would not.
In other words, like I said, if Donnie is being replaced, if the Borough Manager and me, if he's hiring a worker, it'll be Donnie and the Borough Manager. Well, all right, I think we could say, um, we could change the one sentence to mean the Borough Manager will appoint the employee of the Borough consistent with, um, the two-level policy. Management policy.
Might have been right, right above that same page, page seven, number three. Uh, the Borough Manager, uh, his or her, his or her, his or her vote will review and screen all applicants and determine which they believe to represent the most qualified applicant.
Right, okay. Yeah, well, that's the same thing, though. Screening and hiring will be completed by two levels. So it's actually number three of this page. Two-level management policy, and then number three. All right.
I, yeah, okay, that's fine. I had called here, of course, Andy Schaefer isn't here this evening. And so I guess we, we'll just have to kind of do that for the next meeting. I'd ask him for a Borough Code. And I, in mind, I had, if you have a Borough, there is such a thing as a Borough Code. Is there not?
It's online.
They, they, you know.
No, no, you, you didn't ask for the Borough Code, you asked for the bylaws.
The bylaws, the bylaws, I'm sorry, the bylaws.
There, there are no bylaws.
There are no bylaws.
There is the Code of, Code of Ordinances for the Borough and are, the, the book of all of the ordinances adopted by the, by the Borough. And then you have the Borough Code, which is a set of regulations, a statutory set of regulations that are applicable to every single borough in Commonwealth. So, you know, but we're really dictated by two things. The Borough Code is applicable to everyone and then our ordinances that we've adopted that are specific to New Freedom. And so typically, when you think of bylaws, yeah, that's somewhat the.
I sort of like to.
Yeah, it says something about bylaws.
I mean, I would like to kind of see, see that in writing.
I had Marshall.
Who did Victoria Wall replace?
That was a position from a long time ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago. Can you remember?
It was before me.
JD Goodling.
Victoria Wall replaced, she is a billing clerk now that we had an opening for. How long?
I have not a clue. We're, we're trying to staff to the point where we can take care of everything that needs to be done.
I'm just asking if.
We're setting up a new, a new Borough website. We're doing the Savvy Citizen. Wade is doing more on the enforcement of codes for the mayors and through our property maintenance management.
I'm just asking if the Borough ever voted on hiring that individual or approving that replacement? The, the position has been emptied for a while.
He was directed to hire somebody for the position, yeah.
By whom?
By me.
But the council has to vote on that, not the council president.
It's, it's not, it, no, they don't. Not, that's what we're saying, under the two, go ahead, wait, wait one second. Under the two level in the Personnel Manual, which is what we're trying to approve here, that is, that he, he can replace people and he can hire people as long as it's not about.
But the.
I guess there's one clarification, that when, when that person was hired, the Code of Ordinances that was in place said that the manager has the authority to replace people, but not enlarge staff. So that, that's what was in place at the time that person was hired. So, you know, let's not look to what's gonna be.
Personnel Manual.
No, yeah, I'm, I'm going by the, the ordinance on the Borough site for the Borough Manager position. And I, he was not allowed to hire people without the council voting on it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
Here, under that code, Specific Powers and Duties of the Manager. Hiring, Discharging Employees. He shall hire and, when necessary, for the good of the services, shall discipline, suspend, or discharge any employee under his supervision, provided that prior approval of the council shall be obtained before enlarging the staff.
Go down another point or A or B on that. And it says that, um, there cannot be an increase in staff, an enlargement of staff.
Yeah. We're not enlarging, we're replacing a person who was on the books. And we would put a person in that in a part-time position and that's what we did.
With the greatest position.
If you would like to write up a formal complaint and submit it to Borough Council, you're more than welcome to.
I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I, I think, I can't explain it any better than that. There was a person on staff who quit. We needed a person, we replaced that person so that we can run Savvy Citizen, update our new Borough webpages, and continue with the ordinances and the property maintenance code. That's why we needed that person. It's a lower-level person, it's not.
No, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, I'm arguing the process. That's what I'm, I'm, the Borough Council is not.
The process was, so we didn't, we didn't violate any processes in the process of hiring this person. But I, I don't know what else to tell you. Okay, I'm sorry.
Wasn't that also because of the, the billing coming back from the bank or what?
Yes, and that was actually another part of it too, thank you. That, uh, the People's Bank quit doing the billing for us. So that led to the fact that we needed to replace the person who had left because People's Bank no longer collects the billing for the Borough. So that was a, a fourth thing that we needed the person for. Okay, anything else?
With regard to Personnel Manual? Well, yeah, yeah. I'd like to see page nine taken out. That organizational chart, I don't feel is legal. And as someone would say, is infirm. Infirm? Is infirm.
This is the same organizational chart that we have in our current Personnel Manual. So this is really not, not a change.
But it's never been voted on. I don't understand how you can go against the Borough Code by putting the council president above Borough Council. And having Borough Council, the, the council president in charge of Borough Council and the mayor and everybody else. It says in the Borough Code, council president basically is the person that runs the council meetings and has no other authority.
That's right.
Well, the manager reports to the, to the council.
To the council, no, to the council, not the council president, to the council.
I, I guess there's, I look at that chart and there, although there's three boxes there, I don't really, it looks like the Borough, the manager's reporting to Borough Council, the mayor, and the council president. And maybe I'm not a.
I, 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 I mean, I'm sure.
You know, if there's organizational chart, there's a lot more involved with the mayor. There's EMS, there's fire, there's, you know.
There's a lot more involved with Borough Council too. I mean, it's not, you know.
Well, it's, it's all there, committees and boards.
It's just supposed to be the structure of, of.
But that's not the structure according to the Borough Code.
Are we able to see what's going on?
Oh.
I said, are we able to see what's going on? I don't know what's going on. Can I make a suggestion? There, these gentlemen have been waiting this entire three hours.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Maybe jump to them so that they can go home to this.
They are D, I think.
Let's look into this.
All right, why don't we table the Personnel Manual for a minute? Why don't we, why don't we table it until Andy's here?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, he's not even here and he wrote it.
Uh huh. So we should table it until he's here. Table it until July.
You see, right? Yeah, there's.
Probably do it this way.
Yeah.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we, that we table it till July.
We don't, we don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, just do it.
Yeah, we're tabled.
For, okay, that takes care of that.
Um, I'm sorry, Mike. You wanted to.
Well, it doesn't matter to me. I've been sat through many of these, so it doesn't matter to me.
You're up till three in the morning anyway.
Exactly right.
Okay, um, the, the first item is to consider waiving the requirement for a traffic impact study where the expansion of Eden Properties, the three oh two Pleasant Avenue, is noted on the final land development plan approved June twelfth of two thousand and six. Now, this land development plan includes a building which you're gonna actually let sit idle. And it's actually going to create less traffic because you're not gonna be carting stuff to Crescent. It's just gonna stay on-site.
Well, let, let me explain what we do. A lot of people don't understand, even know what we do over there. Um, so, um, I've eaten toll company on the corner of Pleasant Avenue and Constitution. Um, we, uh, we basically built plastic injection molds for metal industry, for a lot of the OEMs in the metal industry, concentrating on, uh, med device manufacturing sector. Um, so, uh, we're, we've got some growing pain, but, but more importantly, we have, uh, we have to store a lot of things off-site now because of, uh, lack of room in our existing shop. We're not, uh, we, we actually build the molds, but then they want to do some automation, end of bar automation, that kind of thing. Got to bring some machines in. We just got to store them until we're ready to, uh, it's like, there'll be more of the machines. And then we just got to add the automation, some of the stuff, and then take them off-site. It's just a simple storage facility. Uh, these cold storage will still be already in our existing building as of now. And then, um, add to, um, to help some of these OEMs out. Uh, so, so the big thing is with the, there's, they can't find people either. Uh, they can't find, uh, they lost a lot of people, uh, through retirement and they're coming to smaller shops to, to help these big corporations out. And we're fortunate enough to be in New Freedom, Pennsylvania, uh, where a lot of people say with American Insulator, that's where plastic injection molds started. So I was here, uh, pretty much wanting to raise New Freedom all my life. I wanted to start a business in New Freedom, worked here all my life, lived here all my life. So, um, I'd like to keep it here, you know? So basically now, we have some storage, uh, over here at the, uh, at the, uh, the old candy factory over here. So we're running back and forth all the time. So basically, it's, it's, we're not doing anything differently. It's just that we can store everything on-site at that point instead of running off, you know, keeping off-site.
So are you, are you saying you generate less traffic?
Right.
Yes, correct, correct. Not adding more people, just generating less traffic, running back and forth all the time. And it's, we're not doing anything differently in our existing building than what we're doing now. It's just, uh, just, we have, um, just, it's just another, what's more machining? We basically just do machining. Uh, but it's just another aspect of, of another portion of the, of the mold with end of bar employing automation, that kind of thing.
Does anyone have any questions about that? So we're wa, we would be waiving a traffic study because the traffic is actually.
I'll make a warning to waive traffic, but if you get less traffic, why would we want to do a study now?
Right, very good.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can I just ask one question? The act of item on the agenda is to waive the traffic impact study. But there appears from some internal notes and reporting that there was also a discussion concerning the environmental impacts.
That's separate, that's separate. There was, there was two notes on there, so.
No, okay, thank you.
Mr. Hollis, let me, let me explain something. So back when we, uh, we bought that corner, uh, and developed it and did a, a building for existing, for existing buildings, we did enough engineering to put a separate building on. At that time, we had no idea what was going in there. Council didn't know what was going in, and I didn't know what was going in there. I didn't know if we're gonna, um, need it for our own sake at one time. Uh, never a million years, I thought, seven years, we'd need more space right now. I just, I just don't move in from a three thousand square foot building to a ten thousand. I just never knew we, you know, we'd, we'd need another space like this. So at that point, nobody knew what was going on. There's all these rumors going around, there was a sheet, it was gonna be a Red Robin, gonna be a strip club, all sorts of things. So you just don't, there was all, all this, you know, drama and energy. And, uh, so nobody knew what was going on, what was going in there. So everybody worried about what was going on. And that's why these conditions were put in place.
And I only, I just didn't want you to walk out today and not get the relief you were looking for. So that's why I raised.
Sure, I appreciate it. Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
You would need some of that building so you didn't have so many cars.
However, that was fifteen, this whole thing is fifteen years old. And do we have any, was there an approval for this development in writing? Do we have anything in writing?
Well, there's, it's on.
It's all saying it's fifteen years old.
It's on the plan.
But it is on there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, it's a building that was shown on the plan, but it didn't have, it didn't have a huge. So the water and all the environmental stuff had already been done to add that building.
Okay.
So do you want to add E to the motion? Or do I, why don't we finish out what, the motion that we had? So we currently have a motion on the table to waive the requirement for a traffic study. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. Uh, I think Ryan's second.
Yeah.
Oh, Andy's second. Sorry. Okay, so the next item is consider waiving the requirement for an environmental impact study for the expansion of the property, which again, it's already noted on the final land development plan and it was already approved in two thousand and six.
I'll make a motion that we waive the requirement for the environmental impact study for the expansion.
No seconds. No seconds. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
Sorry.
Thank you guys, thank you.
You probably should do something different.
I was just gonna say, should we put new business or especially if there's gonna be a lot of new business, we put that earlier?
Well, we probably should at least put new business that has people involved in it so that they could get, you know, I think we'll, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah. Sorry for being getting big.
We'll call it people first. Sounds good. Okay, um. So, do you, do you want to, uh, write the, uh, the new charter?
I can, there's already one in the, uh.
Well, that's fine too, yeah.
In the code.
Yeah.
I could make a copy of that.
Yeah.
Because that really goes down through EMS and everything.
Okay, yeah.
Which I think if we're gonna include it.
Can you, yeah, can you get that to me? I'll just, I'll just make sure it gets in there.
Yep.
Okay, um, this is item C. This is a. This is a resolution of New Freedom Borough Council to assure current and future New Freedom Borough citizens that council should always support and defend their rights, the rights of our citizens, including not limited to the right to keep and bear arms. Want me to read the whole thing? No? Okay. All right.
I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, I have a motion for approval. Inga's second.
Yep.
Is there any discussion?
I've got some, uh, serious concerns about the legality of making a law...
It, it's, I, I changed it from an ordinance to a resolution, it's really just our opinion.
So it's a non, it's a non-viable being resolution?
Yeah, pretty much. The only thing, the only thing that it does for us is if, if something comes along down the pipe, we can say that we don't wanna use our funding of the police department to, and, and other areas have done that too, where, you know, you wanna use the funding of your police department for, um...
Actions that violate the Second Amendment.
Or the rights of the people.
Even if they're enforcing state law?
I think most of the sheriff's departments and private, um, private municipality, um, police departments have refused to support laws that violate the Second Amendment.
In their opinion?
In their opinion.
Is, is that a legal opinion? Is that a legally binding?
It is, it is not, it's a resolution.
That's what I'm saying, there's nothing over than, like, I, I support anybody's right to carry whatever firearm you want, I, I don't have a problem with people legally owning firearms, I, I just have a problem coming up with anything that might go against any kind of state or federal, federal law.
That's why we changed it from an ordinance to a resolution. Because we didn't wanna have a law on books that would violate state law.
And I believe state law is in the middle of passing a new, um, a new law that there is no requirement for a concealed carry permit. Anybody, as, as long as you're not crazy, you don't have a reason that you cannot need a concealed carry permit.
Pretty much can, we're a right to carry in state. I mean, anyone who applies for a permit from York County Sheriff's Office will, will get it, if it's not. It's not like Maryland where you apply and before you're dead, you may or may not to, I don't know, state, uh, retirees to get one.
If, like, personally, I have a concealed carry permit, okay? All that means is that if I go to another state like Florida to visit my daughter, we're reciprocal, and I can show them that, and that gives me the right to carry in Florida.
Just, just, just saying that before the change. We're no longer reciprocal in Florida. Just so you know.
Come on!
No.
When did they do that?
Last year sometime.
I just went online and it said... You're going to Florida.
Okay, uh, did we already do our thing? We have, we have a motion, and we have a second. From Inga, uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. And this is 2021 dash something or other, also. I'm gonna take a motion.
We're tabling the Personnel Manual until next week?
Yeah, I think so, because, Tim's gonna, Ken took an action to get back to us with the order chart that meets the requirements of Borough Code, and, but I think we were under the impression too that Andy, um, had written that, and there were some questions, I think, that people had for him. I'm kinda delayed until...
Yeah, plus he wasn't even... So then we could next month?
You finished everything in new business?
Um, thank you. Okay, and we received an invitation to the York County Boroughs Association, it's June 24th, starts at 6:30, and it's at the Picknick in the Park, York County Boroughs Association. And it's $15. Should we, do, do I have to just make copies of this? Do you have a copy of this?
Everybody should have.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, then I'll just, I'll just...
Oh, there it is, okay.
I have it, I have it, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna be able to make that, so, anyone wants to attend?
I, I think I would last.
Okay, so Dennis will go. Anyone else is welcome. We could probably even reimburse the $15.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, that's gonna break you.
Pass the half, you found it.
All right, any public comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the Savvy Citizen, today it came across there that there's a planning commission meeting on Monday, and that Mann and Parker is asking for a variance. I was wondering, what is that variance? What is that about? I hadn't heard anything come up in any meetings about Mann and Parker.
You'll have to come to the meeting.
It was just advertised this morning, it'll be in the paper starting tomorrow, it's requesting five variances for a subdivision of the Mann and Parker parcel into three lots.
This is for Phil Robinson?
Yeah, I can, I...
This is part of about a four-part step.
Yeah, this is for, um, I think Phil Robinson is doing a subdivision of the farm on Pershman, and he wanted to have some, um, commercial spaces in the front section. He's doing, uh, it's really kinda cool. It's a Walden concept, I don't know if you're familiar with the, um, the city, um...
Mechanicsburg.
It's up by Mechanicsburg. It's basically, it's a, a village concept where the houses are all at, right, pretty much at the street, you don't really have a front yard, so to speak, um, you have some flower boxes, you have, um, some, um, senior citizen housing, you have pizza shops and stuff right in your development, and the development actually owns the commercial spaces, and they decide who they want in there. Like, if they really want a pizza shop, they might subsidize the pizza shop by giving them a lower rent. It's a neat concept, it's, uh, we actually went up and looked at the one up there because he brought it up, and it's sing, it's, uh, it's called a Walden concept, if you look it up, it's, uh, it's really kinda cool.
How many houses?
I'm sorry?
How many, how many residents?
Yeah, I don't, we don't...
Over 140 units.
Yeah, I don't really...
What?
It's over 140 units.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even think we know that yet, but it, it...
Well, on the plan...
Is that in New Freedom Borough? I mean, I saw the plan...
Part of it's in New Freedom Borough, part of it's in Chichester Township.
Love truck.
The majority of the housing is in New Freedom Borough.
Senior citizen housing and Chichester Township. Very few. I mean, none of this has been approved.
It hasn't, yeah.
This is really just...
Now, does this, does this have to go to York County first, or then it comes to the council?
Well, no, no, I think, I think the subdivision is a part of it. Uh, you know, they're trying to set the stage for, you know, they wanna be able to say, you know, we subdivided this property, we're gonna take this part and use it for our commercial spaces.
Okay.
And so they're trying to put the plan together, but in no way should...
They're not even to that point yet.
No, no.
So it's not gonna be like we went through with Berkeantine, where we thought we were okay to pass that, and it hadn't even gone through York County Planning Commission, and that was a...
That was a real coup, but, yeah, no.
Well, it's, well, no, it wasn't.
No.
Stuff happens.
It does.
We're new, yeah.
But we're way off...
We had, we had no fault in that whatsoever.
So we're way off on that.
No, they told us it went to York County Planning, and they won.
I was concerned with the plan.
So, it's sort of like...
I was shocked when I, when I was reading it Sunday, I spent my Sunday trying to figure...
I was up to four o'clock this morning, my...
And the second one on there was the phase three final subdivision for Berkeantine? I thought that had already been approved.
Well, it had, that's what we were just, that's what we were just talking about. They had come to, uh, they had said that the plan had a minor modification, they had been to York County Planning, and that the, York County Planning said it was approved. So when they came back to us, we did not send it back through planning or, or anything because it had already been approved, and they said it was a minor change. So, and, and in fact, the actual plan itself had been approved 12 years ago or something like that, so it wasn't really a big change.
But it didn't have, it didn't have the requirements.
It didn't have the, some of the requirements. So, what happened was, we took back our approval, and we said, no, you really actually have to go to York County Planning and get it approved. So that's the process they went through, they went to York County Planning, and now we're coming back to our planning to get it reaffirmed.
Okay, so both of those are gonna be taken up Monday night?
Yes. There's nothing else? I, we don't need an executive session, so I would entertain the motion.
Motion to dismiss.
Motion to accept. All in favor? All right.